I call this meeting of the Rochester Common Council to order, dated July the 25th, 2017. And I would ask that all of the presenters who are on the agenda tonight, please, please make your presentations concise and brief, if you will. We've got a lot on the agenda tonight. With that being said, move on to the minutes of June 27th, as everyone had an opportunity to look over those minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Been approved in second. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Five to nothing. Did you get the parties that, it was Mason and Bryan? The next would be the Board of Works minutes that you have for reference. Then we move down, we have no communications tonight. New business. First on the new business, we have Richard Rowe regarding city ordinance to levy number of dogs owned in the city limits.
Mayor, I apologize, there is another action. I had to amend the April 25th minutes, and I need those amended, reapproved.
Oh, the Board of Works?
No, for the city council.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the approval amended minutes.
Oh, I see.
I had omitted the entire conversation about the hill property on E 7th Street, 117 E 7th.
Okay.
The redevelopment commission I purchased, and somehow I completely omitted that entire section on minutes, so that's what the amendment is for. So, I just need you to...
Got you in a holding pattern there, Richard. We'll back up here, just a second for a piece of business. Okay, so those minutes for the city council meeting of April 25th have been amended?
Yes.
Do I now have a motion to approve those as amended?
Do we get those amended minutes? Do we get them?
Yes, they were included. The amendment is on page three. Essentially what it said is I added, I only added one paragraph. Terry Lee presented the council with a proposal to redevelopment commission. Redevelopment commission has been offered an opportunity to acquire the property at 117 E 7th Street. The owner has agreed to a selling price of fifteen thousand with the condition that the building be raised and cannot be renovated. The RDC plans to follow the purchase agreement and raise the building, but may need some assistance with demolition costs since they have not received any quotes yet. Because the purchase price is under the state statute threshold, it does not require an action of the council to purchase the property, so this was where information was added.
Any other questions regarding the amendment? I have a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
Bryan moved and Marty seconded. Those in favor, raise your right hand, and it's unanimous. Okay.
Thank you.
That takes care of our minutes situation then. Again, no communications. Richard, you're up now. If you would, come on up to the podium and for the record, for the TV and the council, identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Richard Rowe. Good evening to you all. This is new to me, but I think it's an issue that needs to be raised. I would like to, oh, I was directed to come here and get a breeder's license. What on dogs? What do y'all know about that? Anything?
Well, there is, our ordinance regarding the number of dogs, cats and such that you can have, does limit the number to three unless you have a breeder's license.
Can I get a breeder's license to you guys, or do I have to ask for one?
Well, give us your situation. How was your situation?
There's been a situation, it's rose, that two puppies have gotten out a couple different times. Puppies will be puppies, and they're not three months old, but, you know, when you have somebody that, and I know there's a leash law, but when you got one dog on a leash and two puppies wanting to play, that person that's not familiar with bigger dogs, they get scared, they get afraid. And then I had the mother and father come out and, you know, just, and that's what I'm dealing right now. You know, ever since I moved back here in 96, I've had multiple dogs, never issues. They've gotten out, I've had officers come around and put them back in for me when I was trucking. And, you know, I commend that to your officers. That's a great job, they can get rid of, rode up for it. I mean, you know, where's the compassion about dogs? When was the last time anybody got bitten by a dog in Rochester that was serious, to where this has to be an issue on just three dogs? And why, why do we have an issue just on three dogs? What if I was coming from Texas and I got five kids and I got five dogs, and I want to come to this beautiful town called Rochester, Indiana? Oh, well, I can't, I got five dogs. So, I mean, there's, there's things there that, that bother me. There's things around town, I'll tell you right now, I can name fifty who have more than ten dogs in this town. So, do you want to do, do you want to do us all?
Would you like to state the instance that brought your situation to light?
Not really, not at this time, Ted.
Okay, okay. You're right, Richard, I would say there probably are people who are breaking the ordinance that we have no knowledge of. And the time that the animal control warden can address something is when something happens, usually unfortunately, it's a dog bite, or dogs getting loose, or something, and that's the time when the animal control warden can address something like that. I can tell you this, I don't believe anybody on this dais, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, you've been around a long time, initiated that ordinance. That was initiated some time ago when there was a lot of thought given to...
You know, when Phil...
How many animals you should have in the city limits.
When Phil Thompson was mayor, I told him how many I had, and he said, "Do you have a facility to take care of them?" And I said, "Yes, I do." And I do. But what I'm asking is, if I want to adopt dogs, be a foster parent, gosh almighty, I mean, where am I limited, or where are we limited to help these dogs, help the animal welfare out there, try to do their job too?
Well, if you're doing something like that, they are, they will, they will monitor and manage your situation without assuring that no ordinances or laws are being broken. You know, they, they're very careful with that. And they do have foster homes, but they're very careful that their foster homes are still operating within the guidelines of the city ordinances.
And that's what I'm asking, is to just think about maybe, is this, you want to stay with three dogs, and just, if you get caught, you get caught. If you don't get caught, good for you. Is that, is that the kind of philosophy we're doing around here? I mean, everything, everybody should be treated the same. It doesn't matter, they're still breaking the law, they're just not getting caught. Want me to help you catch it?
That's a good question. I mean, we can't go door to door.
And, and all the police have so much work that they need to do, that they're probably so far behind on just miscellaneous crap, that they don't need to mess around with something like this. The dog catchers, how many dog catchers have we been to in the last ten years, twelve years? I can name eight. And maybe we're going to lose this guy here.
So, the answer is just...
No, the answer is, I think...
Let it run wild?
No, not at all. I think you should be responsible enough, and if you're going to have that many dogs, you gotta have money to feed them, you gotta, you gotta be able to clean up their poop, whenever that you go poop somewhere down the road. I mean, it's, it's, just use your brain.
I'm not sure, Richard, we can have this discussion in any detail without bringing up why it became an issue for you, and I'm not going to do that. Your wishes are not to do that. But ordinances, all of our ordinances are in place to make sure, you know, everybody has rights, but the ordinances are in place to make sure that Marty, I'm not, my situation, I'm not imposing on Marty's rights.
Right.
That's why we have those things. And crack, jump in here, anybody, I mean...
What do I do? Do I go euthanize them? Because they're, they're not going to be able to go to somebody else's home. They love me. They're, they're trained by me. They're six years old.
How many do you have?
I got, I got three white ones I brought in from Arkansas, and I got two puppies in the house, and I got the mother and father in the house. And they're, they're, they're pretty well trained. I, I...
So, what's your total count?
Six.
Sounds like eight. Five.
Four and two is six.
Pardon me?
Four and two is six.
Oh, yeah.
Excuse me?
Two puppies, two in the house. How many outdoors?
Two.
Six.
And, but, then again, you can have two officers approach a neighbor who has eight little bark and farts that run out there, or ten little bark and farts, and they don't follow up and say, "Look, you're breaking the law. You have to, you have to get rid of them." And they just moved into this, this town. They don't want to move back out. And they're, and they say they got a breeder's license. Well, how do you get a breeder's license then?
Well, any, any special circumstance like that would come through this, this council. We have, and it, Shott has pointed out to me, we have, in the past, I think you remember the lady who came to us, she had three dogs, and then her father passed away, and she ended up with two more, and you can get a special circumstance for no more than five, but the council has to approve that.
Is it rated for reading?
No, that's okay. Council has to approve that, and then when your situation changes, either less, or you end up with six, you have to let the council know that, and then...
And I'm more, I'm more than happy to do something like that. But, I mean, I, I need the chance to do it. I mean, I don't still want to be knocked down and closed, and no, that's it. So, then what do I do?
Well, here's what I'd suggest, if you're at, you say you have five, is that what we came up with?
Six.
Six.
And you know what, they're, and some of the officers have, like I say, Ted, have, they've gotten out, and, or people that like to steal, and they like to cause mayhem, could open my fence and let the dogs out, and then they know exactly what's going to happen. So Fulton Street's kind of a, it's become just a hard place to live.
Well, even with the, the most generous interpretation of the ordinance, the most you could have would be five, if this council approved that.
Okay.
So, you're still over with six, you're running over. I, I would suggest, council, before you consider anything like that, we get a report from the animal control warden.
I'd be very interested to know, and I know you have one opinion, what your neighbors say, but I'd be interested to hear from, you know, your neighbors and say...
How about...
What they think, you know, about...
Very good.
You have, you know, these dogs there.
I will go to each neighbor, and I'll have them write something up to the council, and what they think about the dogs, especially the ones that's been there more than two years. I can bring that in. The dog catcher, I'm sure he's got what he feels, but, you know, we're going, I'm going to go to court, I got a ticket, so I gotta go to court now, or pay the fine. I don't think I should have to pay a fine where a little puppy jumps on a little kid, and then the grandmother, nothing against grandmothers, goes, "Ach, shit."
You're breeding your situation, Richard.
So, your folks got out of their pen?
Yes.
No, they, they were in the house.
Pardon me?
They were, no, I have two, I have the mother and the father in the house, and I got two puppies in the house. They're not quite three months old. I think there's, the dog catcher told me I could keep those two up to six months without doing any problem there. So, that gives me an opportunity, do I want to sell them, do I want to do this? And we're talking thousand dollar dogs, we're not talking about mutts. So, it's a lot of money involved, and I'm going to be going to court over this last one. I think it's ridiculous. These are my neighbors. These are neighbors that live two blocks down. You know what, now, guess what? They don't walk by my house, because they're probably afraid to, because they called the police, and now they see me, well, maybe he'll come out, say something, or he intimidates me.
You know, I, let's, let's be fair about this.
I am.
The grandmother and the small child were walking by, and a dog came out of your house and knocked the child to the ground.
Two puppies did. But that's what, I didn't see it, Ted, and I believe, I don't, have no reason not to believe the woman, but she tongue lashing me pretty good. And, you know what, you got a little child right here, you're, you're going to use vulgar, what's that say about the grandmother?
Exactly.
I mean, I know you guys like, got a lot of things going on, but...
Are you looking for a period of grace then, until you can get the permit? Is, is that what you're asking of the council?
That's true, yes, yes, that, and to learn a little more, you know, gosh almighty, there's, you know, I'm not new to this town. I'm, but, I come here to learn something and try to get some help. If I didn't care, you know what, come and arrest me, take my dogs and kill them, if I didn't care. But I care, that's why I'm here.
And when is your court date?
October 10th, I think. If I choose to go that route, I can pay the fine, but, you know, I think, gosh almighty, it's a neighbor, and I think the judge ought to hear this too. I'm sure the dog catcher will be there, express how he feels about the situation.
If you go to court, he will be there.
Of course. And, but, if the, if this grandmother doesn't show up, it's dismissed. And why would a tongue lashing, gun slinging grandmother want to come and see me?
Mayor, I can provide Mr. Rowe a copy of our entire ordinance regarding, because he's touched on a lot of things that actually are covered in our ordinance, so I can print a copy of our entire animal control, or animal ordinance out for you to review, so you can see that there's definitely pieces of what you've mentioned that are outlined in the ordinance that would answer some of your questions, I think, if you want to stop by City Hall and pick that up. I have a ready for you.
Ted, you'd hit on something, saying that little kids got knocked down, and, you know, what's somebody to do about that? You know what, if, if I saw that and it was done by a pit bull, I would be the first one there to save them people, and...
I think the chief has something to...
Can I say a few things, please?
Sure.
Just for clarification, he is in violation of our city ordinance. He was given a ticket under county ordinance. The animal control officer can't enforce our city ordinance. Currently, you are in violation of our city ordinance, right?
Yeah.
There's no worries about that. What, as, as a council, as a body can do, is grant and permission to have dogs, or not. Me, as a partner, I need guidance, so we know how we're going to respond. I, I, we're not going to come and jerk your dogs away, or, or write more tickets or anything, but we need to know how, how, we need some guidance now. Either you can say yes, grant him permission, or say no. That way, we know going forward, and then we're not delaying this out another month or two months. So, I would prefer that the council makes some decision tonight, that way we know going forward how, how we react.
That's a good point. I see we got the animal control wardens sitting right there. Officer Birkins, do you have anything to add?
Chief Johnson stated, the citation Mr. Rowe received was under county ordinance, and that's due with number of animals, and with the action of the animals being untrained repeatedly, so that was handled through me, through county ordinance, not through the city ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Andy, I, in regards to this particular incident, since there's pending litigation, and there's a county warrant, or whatever you call it, I don't feel like I can get involved in that situation, and if we're going to entertain talking about changing the city ordinance about the number of dogs, I think we probably need a little more information before we...
Understandable.
I would feel comfortable doing it.
And I don't think you're asking for changing the city ordinance, or maybe you are, I don't know, you can grant him special permission.
And I, and I'm asking...
And that's what I think you need to act, come here to ask for it. I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, Mr. Rowe, but I think you just want that special permission from the council that's in the ordinance.
And I think each case is going to be, should be...
First I heard him talk, well, how do I get a breeder's license? Then we got into the ordinance language, and now we find out there's pending litigation. I...
It's a mess, yes. Even if someone moves into town and they have a breeder's license, correct me if I'm wrong, they still have to come to you and get permission to have more than three dogs.
Correct.
So, even if you have a breeder's license, you would still have to get permission to have more than three dogs in town.
And I don't have a problem with that. I just, I, I, I think we all that are going to have dogs like this should know and take responsibility, and that's what I'm trying to do. I'm, this litigation is going up there, you grant me it, I just pay the fine then, that'll be it. I won't take it to court.
Well, I, personally, I don't care whether you go to court or you pay the fine. I'm just trying to figure out whether, you know, what we do on our ordinance is, we've been challenged by different ordinances before. To me, and stop me if I'm wrong, but when somebody says a breeder's license, you know what comes to my mind? And I've had, I've had dogs since I was, always had a dog.
Okay.
And, yes, and that, well, that reminds me of you, that somebody is going to be breeding dogs, and have, you know, a source of income, something like that. A puppy, you know, I don't like that word, but it really is.
I agree.
But that's what, when I, when I, when it, when you say a breeder's license, that's what I assume is going to be done there, and not have multiple different breeds. You have six, so the next person comes to us and has eight, where are we going to stand on the, when people are standing around here with a, you know, a less than a quarter an acre lot, most of the time, an eighth of an acre lot in city, and in Fulton, I'm sure, you know, Fulton Avenue, I'm sure you're around an eighth of an acre lot.
Fifty-five by one sixty-five.
How many? Fifty-five by one fifty? One forty?
One sixty-five.
Okay. So, you know, one of my first things, I think, is that fair, that my first deal is, is that fair to dogs?
You know what?
You know, they should be able to have a, they should have a domain to run themselves. And I think in a situation like that, if I personally was ever going to move out into the country, I have one dog right now, if I was going to move out into the country, you know what? I'd probably have five or six. I like them, I love dogs, I think they're great. You have to think it was good for them also, and I don't think it's for our, our city in a small, even pinched in area with the remains that these dogs are going to be leaving on a daily basis, because, believe me, I know what it's like, Terry Buckering out every other day.
It's not so much a bucket.
It's, it's, for five, six dogs, I can't imagine. But it's...
You go buy a tiller.
There's a health issue, there's a health issue.
You till them.
I mean, there's a health issue, in my opinion, there also, I don't know.
You know what, it's been since 1996, and I've had eight dogs. Okay, if you can show any police records, or anything at all, or me fines, or anything at all, I'm done. Well, I'll euthanize them all, and we'll be done with it.
I, I don't think that's a, that's a part of the issue.
I don't think it is. I think you put me right over top. I'll be done.
I apologize for clarification, also in our city ordinance, the definition of a kennel is a place primarily for keeping four or more adult dogs or other small animals that are ordinarily bred for sale as pets. Also could include temporary care facility for compensation, includes any premises wherein any person engages in the business of boarding, breeding, buying, letting for hire, training for a fee, or selling dogs and cats. That's in our ordinance, the definition of a kennel, and I've been trying to quickly see if I could find anywhere elsewhere it references a kennel. But I, given the circumstances, I'm, I'm not sure if the council has had an opportunity to fully read the ordinance, and I'm not sure that you have either. So, as I'm trying to find things so that you guys, we're trying to, you know, as you write things up, like you have a kennel, you already mentioned breeding.
I think he's hit it right on the button, because as a law officer, he's supposed to do what? He's supposed to...
He's supposed to follow the, the law.
Right.
And this body makes the laws, but as I understand the situation, I'm listening to everyone, you're, you weren't cited for having six dogs, you were cited for not having your dog properly leased and under control.
I want to come here before this, before I do get a citation.
He has been given a warning.
He's been given a warning, I see.
And, and told, that's typically our process, if we find out, and yes, I'm sure there are more people than just you that have more than three dogs, when we're not going knocking door to door. If it's presented to us, we address it. Presented to us, we address it, we give them a warning, have given opportunity to remove the dogs from the home, get, find them a new home, or come to the city council and ask for a special...
Mind that, I have a ten-foot fence in my backyard that was accepted, fit by Phil Thompson. I got special because of the dogs. Like I say, if you don't want to make a decision tonight, let me go get the neighbors, and if you're concerned about how the feces smells, or anything like that, they're going to be the ones that are going to tell you, and they're not going to lie. And I do take care of that. I have a tiller, and it's, my backyard's tilled up. It's not, it's not a beautiful backyard, but it is what it is. That's my life, right now.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Continue.
All right.
Do I, do I stay around, or do you have to send me a letter, or something?
Question before we go. What's that?
Is this done, Sid, or do I wait for you to send me a letter, or...
Well, you just said you were going to go around and petition your neighbors.
Oh, I asked them.
That would help, I would suggest you do those kinds of things, and then get back on the agenda if you...
But then we have to make the decision, then are we going to, it's thirty days before our next council meeting.
Right.
Are we going to overlook our ordinance for this thirty days in this, in this capacity? Or, or are we going to enforce it? That's, I think that's the question is, is coming up.
Yeah.
We have an ordinance. Why are we going to say, okay, we can...
If we're asking him to go to neighbors and come back in a month, we should grant him a special exemption for that thirty days, in my opinion. If we're telling him, go do stuff and come back, then should have a special exemption until the next meeting. Want to?
I'm not an attorney, I would recommend putting some stipulation on it, because my fear is, obviously, we've had one incident, that's not the first incident, what if we give him permission and something else happens?
Yeah, okay.
Then who's going to be liable? Are we going to be liable for her not following up?
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
Right, can't be trusted.
Well, we're, we're not saying he can leave his dogs off the leash, we're saying he can have, so if they're off the leash, that's a whole, that's a whole different ordinance.
You know, they're, they're beautiful dogs, they're not hurting anybody.
I'm not doubting that at all, we're just talking about the...
They're probably one, if that happens again, we don't have...
What's the stipulations of the warning? What, what time limit does the warning?
He's usually given about two weeks for the, do they give you a breakdown in time limit on your warning? So, off the top of my head, I don't know. Usually, you have a couple of weeks, or tell them to get on the agenda with the council if you want to get that special permit?
Well, I would, I would, I would have to say if the council extended that period of time by two weeks, give it a month, we're going to owe more liability than we are during the two-week warning period.
I mean, we grant special exemption until the next meeting, and if there's any other issues in the meantime, then that'll weigh heavily.
I guess I'll take another ticket.
Well...
You might want to pursue the license also.
During this time period?
So, you have that coverage, yes.
I do have all their shots, and their baby shots, and I mean, that's an issue too, that people around here don't do that.
Well... Of course, you can only answer for yourself, you can't answer for the other individuals. And like Officer Schott said, you, they don't have the, a capability to have this research by the officers, it would be on a, a situation where, like something... Like something happened. So I, I would say you wanna probably go ahead and pursue that to maybe extend your, the likelihood of possibly having some protection of having, losing a dog. Was it five on the kennel?
There's five dogs, five animals total.
Five animals total in the kennel.
Is there is a requirement within our ordinance that requires the property under, the animal under control at all times of restraint? So if the animal is unrestrained
Unrestrained.
That is a different piece to our ordinance than just housing six dogs. So that would be, you guys are just granting the exception that he can have the six dogs, but you are not negating the other side of the ordinance that he is still required to keep it under restraint.
Yes, must be, must be restrained.
You would have been cited if it had only been one dog because of the actions of the dog. So you're, you're basically here because of your warning.
I'm here because I don't, I'm scared because I don't want to lose my dogs.
First step is keep them, keep them controlled.
It sits right at the door.
We've heard that before.
Yeah.
On different, on different species of animals that we've had in our city that we had to deal with.
But I can, I honestly, I gotta prove myself to you, to wear. I know, and I know the past, but
Does someone want to make a motion to extend
Mason already
Mason did.
Okay. But that will make it the, the next
Next meeting.
Twenty-second of August.
Mm-hmm.
Your warning period, Mason has made the motion. Anybody second it?
I'll second.
Karen seconds it. Those in favor extending the warning period time till the twenty-second?
I will.
Okay.
Extending the warning period until our next
Yeah, twenty-second.
Yes.
Not, not granting.
Correct.
Right.
And at that time, I need to have some information from the
And your ducks in row, and ask for, uh, an exception for five instead of the three. That's what you need to be prepared for.
Okay.
Those in favor?
Yeah, I was gonna say, need to vote.
Need to vote. Those in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
I need to stay in your honor.
Mr. Mayor, you have a dog?
No, no.
He's got a dog in the hunt.
I represent as the room four.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Generally for the city in large, I'm opposed to it, but I need to, at least the council know that.
I remember you.
Or yes, one, if wanted to second.
Thank you.
So you can't tell one second.
All right. Mr. Mayor, before we move on, with regard to the current minutes that we approved, did we just approve one? Three days came through.
Yeah, there was, I caught that too, but I didn't
We didn't do the special.
Put him on.
More than two.
Sure.
We had a regular meeting June twenty-seventh, special meeting July fifth, and special meeting July eleventh. And then he amended, amended April twenty-fifth.
And we voted on the regular meeting and the April twenty-fifth. And so we need a special meeting.
Somebody wants to amend their, somebody wants to amend your motion to include the other meetings.
Well, prior to that though
Oh, I tried to change your
I changed that on the eleventh.
Yes. I did, I, I did. Did you put your name on there?
My name, not, as, absent.
Okay. I did try to change my copy. You are correct.
But two members have already signed that, so
Okay. That's, I'll just write it on there. And then I'll just file that copy.
Okay. So do we need then to approve the minutes of the other meetings?
Of the, approve the minutes of the special meeting on July the sixth.
Yeah, I'll amend my motion on that first one to include the special meeting of July fifth and the special meeting July eleventh.
With the second, I need to include, there was a mission of Councilman Fitzwater, he was present at the eleventh, I had him. So I've got that correction.
Okay. Well said. Okay, next would be the redevelopment commission. And we have a resignation and need an appointment. Terry, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. Yeah, Ben Woodcox, who is a county, excuse me, a council appointee, has had to resign his post, which he's held for, I think, almost five years now. So I appreciate his volunteer service to redevelopment commission. And so his appointment would be from the council. To put the council would, you know, be any kind of consultation with me on what we do, or potential candidates. That's fine. I can bring that. Current other members are Kendra Chudinsky, Ruth from Evergreen, Gunther, um, who we outdid, Enid, Kate Shepherd.
Enid.
And we've had a couple changes recently. This is four, myself, Kendra, Ruth, Enid. Oh, that's four. But yeah, we just need the fifth member. Jenny Smith is the corporation as a community board and Rachel Warner of Legal Representation. So we just need somebody to replace Ben. The only real limit is they have to live within the city limits. The district that the redevelopment commission kind of oversees development in is downtown Rochester, but also east and west on Ninth Street out to the north side of the lake, and then the south side too, down around the Walmart and the south side shopping area. And also all the highway commercials on the district on the south and west side of thirty-one. So part of our, that district is outside the city limits proper by waiver of the county council. So yeah, if you want me to bring some potential nominees, the redevelopment commission meets the first Tuesday of each month at nine a.m. here in the council chambers. So we'll meet, I guess that's next week already. We did kick it around, and maybe the members of the redevelopment commission can come up with a short list for you guys to consider, unless you have candidates.
And those, those meetings last quite a while, don't they?
I try to get them over an hour. And you was successful with that. So, yeah, they've gone three hours before. When we first started organizing, it wouldn't be anything for me to go three or three and a half hours. But we've gotten down to close to an hour, hour and a half, worst case scenario. So it's not that bad. Don't scare anybody off my home.
You used to say, bring your lunch.
Here's my pizza.
Okay. Everybody think that's
Yeah, I'd appreciate if you'd bring some candidates to us and for our consideration.
And if you guys have any nominees, kick them to me and I'll put them up for redevelopment commission meeting next week.
I always like to, you know, the mayor makes a couple appointments, but I, I always like to see people who have skin in the game, if we can get them. And that's always a good thing. Owners of buildings downtown or businesses or whatever, that's always good to have at the table. Okay, that brings us to the downtown partnership. Follow-up for director's salary and requested items, seven twelve Main Street, Amy Rowe.
So the first order of business on the agenda is the request. So we had come before the budget hearings for the city from the Rochester Downtown Partnership's perspective related to some potential requests that we felt were essential to move forward in twenty eighteen. And during that conversation, we were asked to provide some additional information to amend that and then to more fully build that out. So if you look at that request, we have taken off the planters, as it was noted, that the planter costs are in the Board of Works budget. Is that correct, Shota?
Correct.
So we did not have to put that in there. We looked at the city contribution as Mayor Ted Denton had asked us to not only, one, research the potential salaries of directors for Main Street programs in the area, but in addition also to have the Rochester Downtown Partnership to fine tune and create a draft of the job description. It was noted by Councilman Smith that he wanted us to meet with the theater group to see if there was a potential possibility of assisting them with duties and adding that to the doc, the job description. Sarah Reese had met with the group and spoken to Emily Godchalk, and she stated that she did not feel at this time that they would have something that she could do to be able to assist them. So we went back and just kept the job description as noted. So I provided the job description. That job description has not been voted on and confirmed and approved by the Board of Directors of the Rochester Downtown Partnership, because that meeting is not till Thursday. So unfortunately, this meeting came before that meeting. If you look at the twenty, the twenty eighteen City of Rochester RDP amended budget request, that shows the amendment moving from twenty thousand to forty thousand. And that is because the three quotes that I had received from three of the Main Street programs. One of them, which is Logan's Landing, obviously, that is in Logan's Fort, Indiana, that shows a salary of thirty-two thousand, six hundred dollars a year with forty hours and four weeks of paid holiday. The Wabash Marketplace, which is obviously in Wabash, Indiana, that shows a salary of thirty-five thousand a year. These are, this is information that I have. They give a two thousand, five hundred dollar insurance stipends, ten days paid time off, and seven sick days. And then I actually received from the state of Indiana, the young lady that is the director of the Main Street program, Mary Shaw, she stated, as quoted, that she did a quick review of full-time salaries at the beginning of this current year and found that the highest-paid full-time Main Street director in Indiana made fifty-eight thousand dollars per year, and that the lowest salary was twenty-eight thousand. The median salary was thirty-five thousand, and the average hourly salary was, for a part-time director, was twenty-one dollars per hour. So as we obviously crunched numbers, I looked at the potential for any incidentals and also the payroll taxes, we rounded it up to forty thousand dollars for that. In addition, you'll see an additional community development line, which I will speak about second. So that, we'll have further conversation, because that is related to the seven twelve Main Street building. But this is the amended budget as requested. Obviously, it says below that please note that above requests reflect the requested changes per initial city budget conversations. And additional requests, which the RDP feels is essential to the vitality and future of downtown Rochester, if agreed upon by the common council, this amended budget would still need to be voted on by the Rochester Downtown Partnership Board of Directors at the next meeting, which is Thursday, before final adoption. So requested information given. Is there any additional question besides the ten thousand dollar mystery request? Obviously, Mayor Ted Denton, I know that we had spoken about, and I think Shota and I had spoken about needing to, and Terry, whoever he's at, about going before the county council, because it was noted that that money would have to come from seed at funds. And I've spoken to Brian Lewis and followed up with him and Terry about that. So I believe that we're having an additional meeting after this at some point, whenever it is, the meeting is set to discuss how that will go. I think August eighth or ninth is when we have to move forward with discussing county budget night.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just perusing the job description a little bit. I asked, what I asked for the job description, I guess, I, what I was looking for was, what is the objective? What, what will this person be reviewed against on an annual basis? What are the goals and objectives here? It starts out by saying, the executive director serves as the chief executive officer for the Board of Directors. And then it says, the executive director is administratively responsible to and serves under the direction of the Board of Directors. So it's CEO of the Board of Directors, but the Board of Directors gives the CEO direction.
It follows, yeah, no, understood. It follows the line of basically what I have to, as far as my duty with the chamber, is that I provide, I provide direction for the chamber, but the chamber employs me. So my Board of Directors are who chooses to hire or fire me, obviously, if I do not fulfill their wishes. But at the same time, then I am given the ability to be able to fulfill the duties with the chamber, to provide strategic planning, and to, to ensure that the organization is viable, and that we are moving to do what we were created to do. And the, obviously, for the Rochester Downtown Partnership, the mission being that the Rochester Downtown Partnership is part of the Indiana Main Street with the sole purpose to provide revitalization and forward movement of downtown Rochester, Indiana. Whatever that looks like, whatever duty that could be. It could be what Mason is working on, which is the I U K presentation of Economic Development Vitality Project. It could be Harry Webb working on bike racks and needing Sarah or whoever the individual is to do an application to the community foundation. It could be if there is a tourism video and that needs to be uploaded to the website. It could be something as simple, as simple as that. There's an event and specific documents. So if it is that you need some sort of review, we can also create that, I would think so.
Can you, who does those chores now?
Um, that is actually part of, I'm having to do some of that, which, this, basically to cover that, because I'm not gonna let the organization fail. My board has, was gracious to allow the Rochester Downtown Partnership to work under the umbrella of the chamber. My job for the first year was to help them to get their five oh one C three and to launch them. And the launch of that organization was for the sole purpose of being able to have the full rights of being able to revitalize. And what that means is that with that, they are given the right to be an applicant for specific grants. For example, the grants that Terry's pursuing with the theater program, those would actually be unavailable if the Main Street program was not in function. And so when the organization was launched in January of twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen?
It started in September thirteen.
Yeah.
Official designation came in two thousand fifteen.
Yes.
Five oh one C three was created in sixteen.
Sixteen, yes. So it was decided that twenty seventeen, Sarah Reese would act as the volunteer executive director, and that we would pursue, based on lots of requests, pursue finances in other realms. And so we pursued doing fundraisers and pursued sending out every door direct mailing to receive any sort of fundraising that we could to be able to support it on our own. In addition, we did research to figure out what other Main Street organizations were doing to cover that, just because we were unaware. And so I myself and Sarah have met with multiple organizations. It is noted that most of those organizations do actually put a line from either the city or the county. Generally, that is based on seed at funds. It has been noted by Mayor Long of Wabash, and I let Mayor Ted know this, that he had stated if there was any confusion from the councilmen or Mayor Denton himself, that he would answer any personal questions related to how that process works and how they maneuver through providing a line item. They basically said, this is a city or county contribution, that's what they call it. They don't call it a salary. Obviously, I think that's probably for legal purposes. Shota had let us know. But they do that, saying this is the city or this is the county, and then the Main Street organization is given the license to do with it as they will. And generally, for Wabash, Logan's Fort, Goshen, all of these organizations take that money, and they fund a full-time director to ensure that all the tasks are done and that they're done effectively, because it's a bit difficult to try to manage with a volunteer, a full-time volunteer who has to work a full-time job. And then I myself, having the, kind of attempt to have the conflict of interest there to try to carry that, that just gets a bit complicated. So we're, so Mayor Denton had stated that he felt that the organization was essential and that we were to look at what that looks like to follow what other organizations in the region are doing.
Yeah, I, well, I just wanted to make sure we're not, we don't have a duplication of effort here.
Mm-hmm. Well, once, yeah, once the actual full-time employee comes in, I get to just focus on chamber and tourism. So that is what will happen, is that I will be given the license to stand away from all of that. And then I would just sit as an ex officio on the board. I would no longer be an official board member. I would just be an ex officio board member from the chamber's perspective. And that would be my sole And that would be my sole purpose. So once this is accomplished, then we can actually work on pulling the trigger for completely separating the organizations and providing the essential forward movement that it needs. I've been a bit on life support, but they've done an absolute amazing job with just volunteers. I've been impressed with the work that they've done, and I think people have noticed it. And that is basically done all on volunteers and just my extra volunteer time from when the Chamber lets me put my time and effort towards that, so.
Is Terry part of the board?
He is not at the moment, but that was one of the goals for next year, is that we were building in capacity, so we had to do some special exceptions for the board as we were growing. So the goal and intention for that board is to build it out with less city officials, because technically, those positions cannot go into a position of President or Vice President of the organization. That is advice that was given by our community liaison.
Okay. Well, I would, I would mention Terry's not a city official. He is a
Yes, no.
private entity
Yes.
in charge of economic development.
And so
And like I said, this smacks of CEDAT, this smacks of economic development all over. I'm trying to get the picture here. If somebody came in who was, say, interested in our Bailey Building, would this person be one of the people who would grab hold of this person and walk them through the walk?
Yes, because that's part of the next conversation, is that anything pertaining to downtown would be under the Rochester Downtown Partnerships. You know, that would be under their designation, to be able to assist with that. They would be having a stake in that, because otherwise, they're not fully doing the job that they've been created to do. So that's in partnership, obviously, with Terry and Fedco, obviously, in partnership with the Theater Group, because they provide the opportunity for the Theater Group to actually fill out and to submit the applications, because one of the requirements for that is that there's a fully functioning Main Street Program that is up with its annual report, which is what the Director has to do, is the annual report to Ogra or Indiana Main Street. But yes, Terry, at some point, the whole point of that was that at some point, the goal and intention is to go back into the strategic planning at the end of the year and to look at the board and other parts of the functioning. This has to be settled first, and then we can actually dream and move on and actually build out the organization as it was intended to be.
Yeah, if I could, Ted, I mean, one of the things about the downtown partnership with the Main Street organization that's good, I mean, there's the Economic Vitality Committee, that really kind of would be some boots on the ground that helps support my efforts in terms of turning over some of the small retail spaces and things like that downtown, but then also they're in charge with local promotions, which help draw, you know, individuals downtown for events and things like that. So they'd be in charge, I believe, right, coordinating some events for downtown.
Promotions committee would do that.
Design elements, you know, like just architectural design, sod programs, the Rebuilding Commission helps fund, you know, bike racks, signs, lighting, stuff like that, so.
And part of that partnership's already happening. Terry has been sitting on the Economic Vitality. He is not on the board, but he's sitting on the Economic Vitality Committee with myself and with Mason. And actually, I'm not going to go, but the gentleman will be going to IUK, to Kokomo, to preview the presentation that that school of business actually is putting together for a market analysis of Fulton County and looking at a business retention, attraction, and expansion plan. And that's to support Terry in what he's doing. But he sits on that committee with Mason to move that forward.
Okay. So what are you asking for from the council?
Well, I'm fulfilling the request that was asked of me, I guess.
At our budget hearing?
At the budget hearing. And so I guess I just need to know what you need me to do as a next step. Obviously, I know what the next step is for the city contribution. From our conversation prior was that we would sit down all together and speak about that separately. At least, that's the way I took it from the emails that had went back and forth between all of us for that to look at, suggesting that to the county meeting on August 9th.
Oh, the CEDAT funds?
Mm-hmm. For the city contribution, that part.
You're looking for $40,000 out of the Rochester portion of CEDAT funds?
That was to be determined, yeah, that was to be determined by our conversation, as I understood from the conversation with you and with Terry and with Brian. As I don't know where you had decided, you had just requested that I get the details and that we would sit down and further discuss what that looks like.
Well, I'm starting out, I'd like some input from this council. It's our economic development monies. And as you know, back in 1991, all of the economic development monies pooled, the CEDAT funds were all put into one pool and is controlled by the county. So Terry goes to the county every year to get his portion of economic development funds from that pool that's, I could say, controlled by the county. So it would have to go through the county, but you're looking for support from the city.
Yes, I was following up on the request and assuring that this is what you were requesting the information for, so that we could move to the next step. And obviously, there's one other piece to that, which was that we'll speak about next. But obviously, the main part of this specific conversation is based on the salary request that you had requested the information and confirming that that's what we were looking at, and I guess ensuring.
And one of the things, and I also serve on the RDP board, currently as the Vice President and Special Exception for the State, because I am an elected official.
You're an elected official.
Correct. The, one of the things on our agenda for Thursday will be to approve with the, because we want to make sure that the council, that you would be in favor of pursuing, moving forward with supporting the CEDAT fund request. But we need to determine what the exact salary now is going to be for the Executive Director. So once, but we needed Amy at your request to get those numbers.
Has that already been confirmed that we have an Executive Director and that we're going to create another position?
No.
As you said, it's already been determined?
Right. The Executive Director, we have the position, but right now it's volunteer.
Okay, that's what I was assuming.
Yes, currently it's volunteer, completely unpaid.
Correct.
So the RDP board will need to determine exactly what that salary is going to look like. So for purposes of tonight, I had recommended to Amy to just ask the $40,000, because based on the numbers that she had gotten, we're looking at a mid-range of 30 to 35,000 for that salary request. And then by the time you add in your payroll taxes, things like that, you know, you want to make sure that we have all those expenses covered in one, those two. So that's where the $40,000 came from. But the, I don't believe that the salary will be 40,000. It'll be somewhere in that median range of other directors within the same size or close to the same size that we are. But again, the RDP board has, will need to vote on that formally at our next meeting.
Before they would be able to work with the team to do the official request before the county?
But that will happen before it goes to the county for the official request. We just would like to know whether we would have the support of the council to move forward with that request through Fedco, through CEDAT, all of that. The notion that Mayor Ted was just talking about.
I won't speak for these two, but I know Brian and Mason and myself have been pretty involved in this process at different steps and different levels, but certainly have been involved. And quite honestly, the work that has been done by Amy, Shawna, the committee, Sarah, has been unbelievable. And there's no way they can continue what they're doing without this person, in my opinion, this position. And if we're really going to be making a step and a statement about the revitalization of downtown Rochester, I have no troubles with support of the $40,000 use of the CEDAT funds. And like I said, I'm not, I'm not talking for them. I, I kind of think I maybe know how they feel. But we're not on similar committees. We're all doing different things. But I know that these two guys, along with myself, have spent quite a bit of time in committee work and looking at what they're doing. They've been doing some really great things. And it's been really, I think it's starting to show a little bit in downtown as we're moving forward. For what it's worth, that's how I feel.
Appreciate that. Anybody want to give other comments?
I'll second that.
We're trying to get back on track right now.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that.
Man, a little word, like.
So are you guys putting this in a motion to support this effort to the, I guess it would be to, for the city council to support this effort and going forth to the county council and requesting the CEDAT distribution for this position?
Pending the support of the Rochester Downtown Partnership Board, which I'm assuming would be like a hands-down, but we obviously have to go through the process.
I was going to say, I can't see any of us jumping up and down and saying, nah, nah. We might do it just to give Sarah some pretty butt.
Do you actually need a motion, or do you just need a show of support for your RDP meeting?
And we do have the money, correct, for this, you know?
Well, through CEDAT, yes.
Not for the CEDAT, but for the other, the other
Oh, for the grant?
signage, you know, I mean, it's like signage.
Yeah, and I can go
Bailey's Building.
And I can go back and we can wait till I finish the second, if you would like to, to make the full.
I would keep, so mine, personally, I think we would want to keep the salary component separate.
Okay.
Because the other pieces, to answer your question, John, yes. But those pieces would be separate from this, because those would come from different funds other than CEDAT.
Okay.
That would be, but I would put it in the form of a motion, just so that when I document it in the minutes.
It's on the record.
Correct. I don't know that it's necessary, but just for more formal purposes.
Then I would, I would move that the city would use $40,000 of the CEDAT funds for the purpose of funding the Administrator for the Rochester Downtown Development.
I'll second. Those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, unanimous. You've got the support of the council.
Perfect.
Moving forward to the next council.
Yes. And so just to be clear, that conversation, I believe, when I had spoken to Brian Lewis, that that would have to come from a CEDAT request that Terry has to do, correct? So I would need to provide Terry with the information to do that, is that? Okay. So you just let me know what you need. Cool. Okay. Moving on. So the second part of that is based on the addition on the budget. As you see, there's a line that says Community Development. It is dual in purpose, the conversation that, for the 712 Main Street, part of that, the first part, we'll do this and then we'll follow up with that is, and I'll give a little backstory. Obviously, I'm standing here on behalf of the Rochester Downtown Partnership again, hopefully for one of the final times. And also a team of revitalizers. Gentlemen, if you could raise your hands if you're part of that team. So
This is the revitalizers?
Yes, I've made that name up for them.
The Brewery Sectors Group or something?
And so just to give a quick background, and then off, since I know that we're short on time, is that this team, which we connected with an individual that would like to invest, has been working closely with Terry, myself, and a few other folks to look at the possibility of purchasing the Bailey's Building. Obviously, that's 712 Main Street. And the potential possibility of moving forward with a brewery, obviously on the bottom floor, and then apartments on the top. So the team that sits here is the potential brew team, as we call them.
Okay, this is just a small, small thing, but have you checked with the alcohol board?
Cory and I actually drove to Bristol today.
Okay.
So, yes, we drove all the way.
That location.
What was that?
It would work in that location.
Yes, yeah, we had to check all the specific, we've spoken to an attorney at the state and looked into it multiple ways, just to make sure that we weren't missing anything. Our final conversation today with the office in Bristol was that they stated that you could have a brew license. And then the gentlemen, depending upon how the contract is finalized, are looking at supplementing that with a wine license to serve wine with the beer in the potential restaurant that is being proposed, so that there's a dual partnership. There are no three-way licenses, which Don knows, left, whether it's carryout or not carryout. There's no three-way licenses left in general. So the only one that's left is a wine license. We found that out today. Obviously, more details have to be finalized in the plan before we move forward. So today, I'm here just to speak about a couple of things that I needed to, that Shawna felt that I needed to kind of bring to the attention so that we could make sure that we're not missing anything before moving forward on the final details. So.
Right, because that could be a real life killer.
Yes, it could. No one intended.
You might write down the name of Tom Sawyer. He's on our local alcohol board. Can be a good liaison to help.
Yes, because as I believe and understand is that the brewery license does not have to go before the local board, but the wine license does have to go before the local board for approval before moving forward. So it would be essential to speak to him to ensure that we're good with that specific part of things. So, so going back to the specific project, the gentlemen have been working in combination with multiple people to move the project forward. Obviously, understanding that the Bailey's Building, per the bank's statement, is probably on its last leg. I would think that John Garrett would probably agree with that. Unfortunately, it's deteriorated. There's a noted deterioration of continued $35,000 in repairs every year. Or actually, it was from April of 2016 until now. That continues to accelerate. So the bank has spoken to us and has noted that they would like to turn and burn the building, because they would like to move forward, obviously noting that the bricks on the back aren't going to get any better, and the liability that they hold on that is very large. So they have decreased the price of the building, the purchase price, to $15,000, noting that it needs to move. And so part of that, though, is that with the investors and the team of revitalizers working on the plan, they, as their business plan shows, part of being able to financially do this, because it's not financially viable in certain areas, it's got to such a deteriorated state, that they would need a special exception. And obviously, we need a special exception based on the ordinance, you know, number 03, 2016. And here, under B, number one says brick and/or ornamental decorative masonry material will be used for all new exterior wall, reconstruction, and construction for any building or structure visible from any alley or street. All materials must be conducive to the historical intent of the corridor as defined by the City of Rochester Common Council. No other construction material is allowed. So as they are looking at the financial viability of how do you move a project that is this large forward, the special exception to put block versus brick is what they would like to come before. So I have some details based on that to explain what that special exception that they're requesting is for. And obviously, that gives two options, because we want to make sure that we're as fair as possible in the request. And the reason I'm making the request is that, obviously, the Rochester Downtown Partnership is working with them, and that there is no final. You got it? Do we need one more?
Need more?
Is it one sheet?
Yep, one sheet.
Yes, one sheet.
We got plenty.
It's better to be, oh, it's better to be over-prepared, correct? So if you'd like to read that and just see what that notes.
You're talking, okay, I haven't read it all, but I assume we're talking about the back wall?
Yes, sir, the back wall. So the front wall would, obviously, the historical nature of the building from the front. So obviously, it would be in our, in the individual's vested interest to ensure that that continues to look attractive. So that would be, obviously.
Which, in my opinion, makes sense, because that is, that is the historical building in the morgue.
That, yeah, and that is why I think the bank, even though they are not here, that is one of their points, is that they feel that to be able to make sure that that building is not another Akron Opera House, which I hate to bring that up, but that it would be falling down. They want to do everything they can to support the efforts of the investors and the revitalizers, which I just gave them that name this afternoon at 4:30, that they, I'd have to get T-shirts, but.
These are the investors?
The investors revitalizers. That's what we call them. So there is one other individual who is not here at the moment. There is one other individual who is not here at the moment, who is going to potentially put a large amount of money into the project. Those details haven't been confirmed at the moment, there's negotiation going on, so.
Are you guys doing this for beer?
If you don't.
There's a lot of work here, isn't there?
A lot of work.
Yeah, yeah.
I wish we could have brought beer to taste, because I have not tasted beer that has been.
We're doing more of this for our community.
Yeah.
To be honest with you.
Yeah.
Rochester needs some help, I think we need to find a way to bring people to our community.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. I applaud you for that.
So we've got to.
A lot of tech point work. Yeah, oh, Lord.
Amen. So, obviously, you know, Terry and I have been working on a brewery for a long time and have went through it like about a thousand times to try to find a successful brewer, and these guys came out of the middle of nowhere and basically declared that they've been drinking beer for a long time and brewing it as well. And then I didn't believe that it was good until I actually went to their home and drank a couple beers and realized that it's very unique.
Hey, you're getting off track, ain't ya?
Yeah, I know. Hey, you opened the door, Ted.
Too much information.
You opened the door, don't open the door for me.
Too much information.
Don't open the door. So anyways, point being, obviously, to be able to potentially, to move forward, obviously, this, all of these would be contingent upon the final contract that would be written, signed, sealed, and delivered. So this is the special exception. At this moment, the total repair cost for the back wall, per the architect that was employed to look at that is one thou, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. The potential investor is absorbing a hundred thousand dollars, and so obviously, this special exception, and the other thing I will speak about, would be able to offset some of those costs to make sure that the project is viable for everybody, and that everyone wins and no one loses their shirt. So the first part is the special exception, obviously, that has to go through the council, Gary Madlam, he, I went to them, he connected with Casey, and they confirmed that because of the ordinance, that would have, that would have to be moved forward through.
I move we give that property special exemption to use block instead of brick on the back wall.
Is there a one or two option?
There's two options.
Yes.
Option one sounds like the route to take, doesn't it? I mean, is that the preferred?
That's the preferred route, obviously, but because of the fact that there was not an understanding of which direction the council would go, obviously, the other option was presented, but option one has been the one that has been spoken about the most.
Well, you referenced World Graphics out of Plymouth to create a vinyl sign or advertisement to cover the obvious transition from brick to block, what, what does that entail? What's that?
And those details are being worked out with the investor at the moment, so that would, that was our quest.
So it would be a block wall in the alley, but with a vinyl something on it?
It'll be brick up to the third floor, and then the whole third floor will be block.
Oh, I see.
So there'll be the brick to block transition.
I see.
And that's where we want to ensure that it doesn't look unsightly, because Mason can see it from his house, so.
Still better than a hole in the wall.
Why are we voting on this now if they haven't purchased the building?
There's no contract, there's nothing going on.
Yeah, we have to do this because the, the bank has noted that the purchase of the building has to be done by the end of the month, because they are tired of having it in their coffers, so.
I understand that part.
What are they gonna do with it after the end of the month? They're still gonna have it?
They're gonna still have it.
They're still asking about it.
Yeah, but they noted that basically they would prefer if we would move it forward quickly.
I like that word.
Yeah.
Not that we have to.
Yeah, prefer. It would be, yeah, it would be the preferred direction.
Help financially make sure the numbers work.
And I guess on the, on the good side of it is, John, that if you do affirm or approve option one, that even if, if it gets to the point in, let's say, this potential opportunity, which, God willing, it does not disappear, but if something were to happen, then it would allow the bank, I would say, the opportunity that they could do the same thing to make sure, to ensure that the building is, above the stuff that's safe. Because if you recall, back in two thousand and fourteen, or fif, fourteen?
June twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen.
Yeah, that building had came before the council for an application to Casey's office, which in November then was.
Several times.
Yes.
To the board, it works awesome.
Yes, so.
And I'm, I'm all for approving the option, but I don't think we can do, I mean, we can't really do too much, except for say, yeah, go ahead with it.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think.
Fine, I mean, do you, I mean.
Yeah.
But it's.
That's exactly what they're looking for.
Yeah, the special exception.
That's gonna make all the difference in the world, Lake City.
To Lake City Bank? Yes, that would assist the process.
Because they know there's a, there's a stipulation due to our downtown historical corridor ordinance, that we would be relieving that restriction for this particular option.
Yeah, obviously, if there was any other building that anybody needed to have a special exception that fell outside of, you know, if it fell outside of that ordinance, then obviously they would have to come back again. So this is just asking for the Bailey's building, that property, the back wall, either choosing option one or two, allowing them, contingent upon everything being finalized, that they would be able to have kind of a pre-approval of that special exception.
Option one is what you all want, right? Okay, so enough said and done.
So we just need a formal motion on that.
Got a motion.
Well, does the bank just want to know whether we would approve one or two, some type of special exception, or do we have to, do we have to choose one or the other? And more importantly, does Andy need to prepare anything for us to vote on before we can make anything formal?
Andy doesn't need to prepare anything legal, it's already, because it's already written in the ordinance that all faces a motion from the council to approve the alternative solution to a brick facade. So that's just notated in the minutes, and it's taken care of.
If they're the guys that are gonna be doing it, if they want option one, then you all wait and approve.
Your motion was for option one, was it not?
Option, I was seconding that, I was seconding that.
I have a motion from Mason to approve a relaxation of our historical corridor ordinance in favor of option one for the back of the Bailey's building, and a second by John. Those in favor signify by raising your right hand, and it is five zero.
Perfect.
Go for it. I'd just really like to know what that vinyl's gonna look like.
We'll get back to you.
That sounds interesting.
Yeah. The other part of it goes back to this very quickly, is that based on that, looking at the finance part of the project, I've been speaking with Shada and attempting to figure out the cost, the eighty-seven thousand dollars that the individual is choosing to, or the one hundred thousand dollars that the individual is choosing to eat, also there's an eighty-seven thousand dollars that we are looking at covering to assist in that project from the assistance of Terry and myself, the Rochester Downtown Partnership, working on that, trying to figure out how we can ensure that this project is viable for everybody and moves forward, so.
You guys got eighty-seven thousand dollars someplace?
Well, so actually, oddly enough, so working on this for, no, oddly enough, actually, I can tell you, so twenty thousand dollars comes from the redevelopment commission. The Rochester Downtown Partnership decided to basically reverse the gift from the redevelopment commission, twenty thousand dollars of that at the beginning of the year, back to the redevelopment commission for the incentive for the Bailey's building, so that money was earmarked per Terry's request to the Rochester Downtown Partnership's board to be put with the purchase of the Bailey's building, so that's twenty thousand of it. The price that the bank had initially given as the purchase price to the team was thirty-five thousand dollars, but upon them looking at CRA credits and other parts of, you know, legal possibilities, and obviously their reputation in Fulton County and the importance of the project, they brought that from thirty-five to fifteen, so that's twenty. Obviously, the project would be eligible for five thousand dollars for the Rochester Downtown Partnership facade grant, so that's five thousand. Duke Energy has committed a thousand dollars to the Rochester Downtown Partnership to move to the project under its community development arm. NIPSCO has committed fifteen hundred dollars under its community development fund towards the project to be moved through the Rochester Downtown Partnership. Obviously, the wall exception, based on, here's the, this is what we've been working on. So the wall exception saves thirty thousand dollars, so that leaves a gap of ten thousand dollars to fill to provide that support. The team has shared that they prefer not to do a tax abatement. Obviously, the whole point of this is because they would like to make sure that this project's not the only project, and that this project will be a project that does some domino investment. So the other conversation that I've been having with trying to figure out how to cover this, was looking at with Shada and some other folks, is, is there potentially a possibility for ten thousand dollars to cover that? So obviously, that is what this community development piece comes from. The rationale behind that, obviously, because we've thought about this a million times, is that we don't want another building like the Centennial Tower, where it costs the city about god knows how much, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So, so then.
Private donations.
Private donations, but also lots of heartache and pain. So a ten thousand dollars versus the hundred thousand dollars potentially is a drop in the bucket, so that is, that would close that gap. And so it was noted that I should add that and just throw it out there and see what thought processes are, and.
This is ten thousand, above and beyond the ten thousand needed for the theater grant, right, for sponsoring of the theater grant, yeah.
Oh, you know where I'm going.
Shada, what's a normal monthly rest drop water bill?
One off the top of my head, just because I happened to recently look at it, runs roughly three hundred dollars a month, if it's, if it's operating six to seven days a week.
How much sterilit, sterilization do you guys do on your bats and everything? So we're probably looking at four grand influx in water bill per year, once they get going.
Because they, do you know what, like how many, how many gallons would you use in one sterilization process?
Well, speaking particularly just the brewing process, I mean, the sterilization and the cleaning, there's a lot of that that goes on, but we're looking at four hundred gallons per batch that we brew. I'm estimating in the first year, you know, we're gonna use about twenty-five hundred gallons a month just to brew the beer. That doesn't include sterilization, the sanitation process that we'll be using every time we brew. And then that could go up anywhere to potentially ten thousand gallons a month in somewhere around year three, assuming we hit our numbers and projections that I've put together. Again, that's just the brewing water, that's not the sanitation water.
So that's a, I mean.
Something to think about.
And obviously, there's requests, I know one of the things that we had concerned ourselves with is, how would this be perceived, you know, because you're giving money towards a project for a private donor, the actual difference in this versus just giving it to anybody is that this specific building is a blight on all of us, and has a unique deterioration that warrants moving forward quickly. Anybody can see that, but, you know, the bank and other folks have noted that another winter may not prove helpful to that, so.
Is this something that's outside the realm of Fedco, Terry?
Outside the realm?
Yeah, as far as money's available for the business.
Is there a financial request, or just the exception?
The exception, and then a financial request that just came about in the last day.
Looking for ten thousand dollars?
I think part of the request is gonna be in front of the county council, it's gonna be for various community development projects, especially projects that have, you know, a large impact, potential large impact, like the one these guys are talking about, so, yeah, again, we're talking about just a matter of ten thousand dollars for a, you know, several hundred thousand dollar, you know, investment to save a building that's historically prominent, last really three-story building we have downtown.
The one ruffle is better, Terry.
I know the one next to it is, the Masonic Building is, or others, but, yeah, so I mean, we develop the projects and we're willing to be asking the county to provide ceded dollars for, for the county, so some will go to Rochester, some will go to Akron, some will go to Fulton, whether it's the projects are presented, is what we look at it, so.
And the reason it came here, yes.
Grant the exception for, and basically providing some incentive to turn it over. We've been looking at the details, financial details on this project for well over a year, and the numbers aren't getting any smaller in terms of what it's gonna cost the investor to move the building forward, so I think having a crew that's willing to invest in it, and something like these guys are talking about, you know, could be money well spent.
Oh, I'm a hundred percent behind you on that. Just have to figure out where it, where it comes from, because you are right, it is a, you're talking about tax monies.
Yes, understood.
And we have tax monies dedicated for economic development and redevelopment. Anywhere else, it gets a little dicey on, for a private venture, to contribute to a private venture. And this isn't the first group, it's been before, this council, I can remember years ago when the Compassionate Healthcare Center was getting started, and we went through a similar situation, it, it's tax monies, and you have to be real careful.
Understood.
And the county council has, does have a history with this, of investment in, you know, private ventures, to bring about proper use of buildings, sometimes we just don't wanna see buildings fall into the wrong hand, so something that could host a business isn't taken up for, you know, store, personal storage and those kind of things. So we've got some track history, some track record with the county council of getting funds for the, for Delta Tool Building, for example.
I remember that one, yeah.
Three buildings in Tijuana, they invested heavily in, that we brought one business to, when, actually two businesses to, the three buildings, and saved three buildings. So there is some, you know, track record of the council funding that, so.
And the reason the request was brought here was because Duke had initially given the indication that they were gonna supply a larger match, and then I received the call at the last hour that that could not move forward. So for the sheer fact that the folks are looking to do the counter offer, obviously, we had to come and prevent, present this here and see where it would fit most effectively, so that is where we're at. So if it behooves us to add it to the county request, and it seems that it would be solidified in that, then we can move it there, just the team needed to be able to have that specific indication that it was solidified before being able to finalize the contract and move forward with the bank.
Well, I think it's a great project, and while we're coming up with ten thousand dollars someplace, but Fedco's budgeted, we got a budget for that, the Fedco program for business development and getting going, and that's, I would think, that's the direction those funds need to come from. That's just opinion, I don't know where else you would get them.
I would offer Lake, I would counter Lake City Bank at five thousand dollars, and I come up with my ten thousand dollars, I guess, what else are they gonna do?
I mean, we could do that, and we have a whole team who's worked really diligently.
But I don't feel the city has any, any, I don't really feel that the city of Rochester has any business getting into personal business or real estate.
Understood.
And I've said, made that statement a couple times in my years, that I just don't think we do, it's hard to explain to somebody on the street that we gave these people ten thousand dollars to start their business, why don't you give it to me?
I completely understand, that was one of the, that was one of our concerns, but obviously, behooves us to ask and to start the conversation, and then to see what the other options are, and to see what.
Terry, you were, you were gonna say something about Fedco?
Yeah, what it was.
Oh, you forgot? You better get sharper before tomorrow.
You know, I just, yeah, I kinda did, I actually forget what it was, but, you know, I think there is, again, some, other communities, other cities and towns are finding ways to incentivize, so whether it's a tax abatement, or grants, or you name it, I mean, it, it all depends on the project. I mean, you can't just kind of raw brush and go, here's, you know, ten thousand dollars to kind of throw in a hole, when you have a project standing in front of you, especially on the structure, that would wanna keep on the tax rolls, these guys wanna keep on the tax rolls. I think you have to. I think you have to, you know, use an old phrase, think outside the box and provide something to bring that private investment, call it E3, it's a public-private partnership, put the public out there, a small amount, the private out there a large amount, and show, hey, this is a city where we wanna do business, this is a city where we wanna invest our money and our time to do something worthwhile.
And I think, for example, Harry Webb just received, what was it, $20,000 from the city of Huntington?
Oh.
Or somewhere that he's moving forward with. He said he received some money from the city to actually move a project forward for economic development.
And he got it from their economic development.
Yeah, he didn't say which specific funds, but that was something that he noted, that he had asked about, and I think it's probably Manchester, excuse me, Manchester.
And just so the council knows, there, we do have non-tax-supported funds that if we needed to get creative, you know, to keep this moving, like you said, Ted, whatever we need to do to make this happen or how we do, we do have non-tax-supported funds that we look at to see if it makes sense, so that we are not tapping into the taxpayers, the tax-supported funds that we have.
Because that could be a slippery slope. John, I do agree, because that's been my, my sticking point in trying to, that's why I went to Shada, because I couldn't in my brain figure out how in the world, because if somebody comes to me and asks me about it, or would come to you, I wouldn't, I did not want someone to have to field a conversation, because I know how many conversations I have to field to be able to speak on behalf of certain decisions I make. So, I didn't wanna put anybody on this council in a position that would make it too awkward. But, I also wanted to find a creative solution for a problem. And we had already asked Terry for, we had already had the $20,000, and then we were looking at the $40,000 for the salary for the Rochester Downtown Partnership. So, we were trying to figure out how we can make sure that we're not draining one specific fund for requests, but yet move projects forward. So, that was just where that was coming from.
Do you have a suggestion as to what, are we talking Riverboat Gambling Funds?
That would be one of my first ones, would be the first option I would have, because it's an unrestricted fund and it's non-tax-supported. One of the other things that we kicked around and, as these gentlemen have made clear, they don't want to do, and in my very quick analysis with Amy today when we were chatting, you know, a tax abatement versus the $10,000 versus a $100,000 demolition bill, that that building has to come down at some point because of our informational, you know, how does all of that look? And when you start looking at those ROI's, they would prefer to make sure that that investment is paying itself forward and not going through with a tax abatement. And I will give them 100% of kudos for that one, that they are seeing that, because just the small investment that they're looking at, I haven't personally seen the business plan, I've just heard the highlights of it, and-
But we do have a copy if you would like to see it.
Yeah, it sounds like the process, and by the time it goes from ground zero to being complete, it sounds like it's gonna certainly be a very thriving opportunity for everyone, them included. So, it's, and even if you were to, you know, for them to try to make the numbers match and make everything mesh well, you know, you guys are in business, you get that, that bottom line, and it would take, you know, three to five years on a tax abatement, even for them break even, unless the assessment came in such dramatically different from where it is now, which I assume it will.
Is what Christina, yeah.
But we don't know, that's the unknown. None of us, even the assessor's office couldn't sit here and say, well, if you put this kind of, it would, you know, it's a-
And I called to confirm that with Christina today, she couldn't give me it, yeah.
Yeah, and that's a gamble. So, this one is more tried and true. So, if we can find a way to assist or go through Fedco or whatever that looks like.
I hate to say it, we're getting so far, you know, so far ahead of ourselves, because first of all, we don't even have a contract by the process. We have, we have to, just to move things down a little bit, Mr. Mayor, if I may, we've approved option one, that is what they came for to basically-
That was one of the requests, yes, sir. Yep.
Lake City Bank has a dead horse laying in the middle of our street. Hello, Lake City Bank, watching on TV. Okay, go back and counter them. Hey, you know, we can't pay you 15, we're gonna pay you 10.
Well, and actually-
Talk to people in Warsaw, give you some business cards, the guys to call, and tell them, hey, you know.
Yeah, and this is actually, and this is actually on behalf of the team and the investors. So, Lake City Bank has brought the purchase price down. They started at the 90,000.
You counted the 20,000 in what you were reducing on the price, so now we throw another 10,000 in, and guess what, we can scratch this lane off.
What was that? Yeah, and actually, that-
This is his business.
Yeah, he said, I understand. Yeah, I know, no, yeah.
I'm cheap with money, especially when it's somebody else's.
And I completely understand.
I don't like to spend-
Yeah, and I completely understand. So, if the request is no here, obviously, we can move forward in a different fashion. It is just coming to see what the thought process from the council is, and if the, obviously, if the answer's no, then obviously, they don't wanna do a tax abatement, but we'll figure out-
But that is an option, isn't it?
Yeah, they, that is an option, but it would be-
And John has an option. I mean, you, I think you, I think you're hitting all of the options, and that's what we need. The biggest thing is, is understanding is, is these folks are looking for some support from the council. Whether, whatever kind of support that is, whether that is, yes, we will help figure out a way to keep this project moving forward and commit to that. I think that's kind of where they're at. They wanna make sure that they're coming in, putting in this several hundred thousand dollar investment for, you know, they don't want, want to come in with, with somebody going, no, we really don't want you. They want to come in and say, yes, we, we want you, we would like to support you, however that is, and whatever creative ways, you know, council-
Oh, I don't think anybody up here doesn't have 100% support for these guys. I think Joe John saying is, a couple of us need to call Lindy Breeden tomorrow at the Warsaw. So, Lindy, get with it.
There's a couple of them, they'll be called up here.
And you are most welcome to do that, because I know that they worked very diligently to negotiate on behalf, they actually got the price from 90,000 to 15,000, so I say that that's pretty good. If somebody has a trump card, they can get it down even farther, then so be it, that would be great. Obviously, that's the easy answer, but the bank has basically given the indication that that was as low as they could go.
Of course.
So, of course. But they said, they said $30,000, John, was as low as they could, or $35,000, but we got it lower, so, but that's as comfortable as they are without having Mayor Denton call them, so.
I think you need to go to John's office tomorrow and sit next to him. Make a couple of calls.
And say, John, can you call?
And we'll write out a counter proposal.
Yeah, so, obviously, that, you know, basically, the process is for them to be able to put the contract, because they have negotiated with the investor, and then they are in the process of putting a counter proposal in. And so, to be able to do that, they had to have these two pieces of information to be able to fully build out their business plan, and obviously, the building has to be purchased by the end of the month, so this is the last board meeting before that. So, that was where we needed to figure out what the next option is. So, what do we need to do, Shada?
I'm just gonna wrap up.
I'm done. I'm done.
Just wrap her up?
You go, I'm done. You go next. What do we need to do?
I think it, I think it goes without saying, we won't let this project fall through the cracks for lack of $10,000. There'll be places we've come up, might not be here, but we'll find you $10,000.
So, we can-
There you go, there's your-
So, we can-
There's a commitment, okay?
A commitment, okay. That's all we need, is just a commitment. We don't-
You better get it from your bank.
John, that's your job. You work on that one. That's John's job, so.
Okay, thanks, Amy.
Perfect, okay, so.
You're all through, right?
But then this affects her.
It does affect my budget.
The cheese amended.
Yes. So, how would you like me to move forward? Because my Rochester Downtown Partnership Board meeting is on Thursday, so I need to-
In the last one we saw, you had the marquee on there.
No, we did not actually have that. That was the, that was, yeah, that was not us.
It was a different, oh, yeah, the planters, okay.
Not planters, but the board of works is covering that, so.
Yes.
How would you like me to move forward with this? The amended budget?
Well, you're gonna-
Have to wait until next month.
Yeah, have to wait for the $10,000 aspect. They put a question mark there for you.
Okay. So, we will add-
Be determined.
Yeah, and we'll just, we'll talk about the 40,000 and the rest of it, we'll just-
I was gonna say, for our purposes, for RDB, we'll, we'll make our budget the way it is. We can still-
Pending, yeah, pending.
I think we'll be all set.
Final decisions.
No worries on that.
Perfect. Do you need anything from us? Anything else?
I'd like to see that business plan. Would you mail it to me?
Mike has copies of it. He brought them for y'all, if you would like to see that.
For everybody. I apologize, I was having equipment issues right before our game, but I have five copies. I would gladly get in and four copies of these.
Okay.
Good luck on them.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, roll first thing, get a contract.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Sounds good. I made Mr. Ellis, Paul Fields back there for a while, why don't you step up and do the redevelopment emission real quick?
No, that's fine.
It's a good copy, just didn't get-
We're gonna jump ahead to Terry, he's gotta get out of here.
Okay, thank you.
Wow. Send that one down. My gosh, there's 10 grand worth of paper.
Hours and hours and hours.
Don't tell me that.
And it's not finalized yet, because there's more hours to be done, so.
Terry, leave with redevelopment emission.
Yeah, really, from more the Fedco side to begin with, I see you guys have the resolution for the slum and blight declaration for the Times Theater down at the bottom of the page. I didn't know if you guys had any questions about that. We discussed it at the June meeting, I believe, that for the Ocre Grant, we have to repeal the previous slum and blight and bring this one on just the theater building. Also, a couple of dates on that. We expect the Fedco, we have the ownership of the theater building right now. We expect that the Fedco executive meeting on Thursday, we'll vote to sign the deed over to the 501(c)(3) Rochester Times Theater, not-for-profit organization, so they'll be carrying the ball 100% from there forward. And also, on August 2nd, I think it's next Wednesday, maybe, the Ocre Community Liaison will be here to look at the project, sit down and talk with Emily Gottschalk from the Theater Board and Stephen Ray from the Regional Plan Council and-
Tour the facility.
I think there will be a tour of the facility and discussion of the entire business plan and the entire grant request and so forth in terms of some of the further details. So, I wanted to kind of touch on the theater project. Also, Amy just got all the money from you guys, so maybe I'm a dollar, daylight and a dollar short here, but I think it would be good for the city to support the grant application, the 10%, whether it's in-kind or other, 10% of 500,000's 50. Now, this is not gonna be a privately-owned outfit or operation, it is a non-for-profit organization and run as such. So, 10% of the 500,000 is a minimum grant match. I know the Theater Board is looking to bring in quite a bit more than that, so it may not be necessary, and I may have a further report after Thursday that there are other funds available. I think the city had discussed 10,000. I don't know if that was cash or if that was sort of sustainability. Maybe you can provide some clarity for, on that for me, or at least by the time we meet with the community liaison, I'll need to have that kind of answered. So, theater. Other than that, I mean, I can update you here all night on Fedco business, whether it's Blacker or Dean Foods or Wind Project or butanol plant or, you know, part of our seed request for Highway 31 improvements for industrial development out there, a lot of things going on.
Would you like to share briefly our NDOT trip last week?
Yeah, good trip to Indianapolis last Thursday to meet with one of the project managers and one of the economic development directors with NDOT. Basically, a discussion of, hey, we wanna, you know, we've got some interest in Highway 31 development. For the 17 years or 18 years I've lived in Rochester, there's been discussions about limited access and elimination of, you know, access to 231, which makes it really difficult for, you know, development decisions to be made. And their five-year plan that came out last week, yeah, last week, I think, or maybe the week before, there are no changes in alignment of 31 in Fulton County, no changes in access points. It is redlined through Fulton County to, for the next 20-year plan, to receive additional funds for safety improvements and access improvements and those kind of things, but no, no true plan right now to come through-
Nothing drastic.
And leave us two, two interchanges and a couple of overpasses. So, we're going forward as, you know, our operation is that we're, we're gonna develop 31s as it sits right now, and then it really, I think they were very glad to have us ahead of the game. I mean, Mayor and I are going to Illinois tomorrow to meet with a couple of companies, and I think we can walk in and say, you can plan to be at this location without fear of being, you know, cut off from, from instant access to Highway 31. So, really good meeting there at NDOT. And we followed up today with some questions, and they got right back with us, so.
And, but, but they are pretty definite, there's gonna be two J-turns, 10 and 110, that's in the cards.
That 10 and 2?
Yeah.
I had heard 10 and 11, that's a good rate, 10%.
Yeah, 10 and 11 have been on their radar.
But, the good news is, the rest is, I got the impression that money's a little hard to come by to do everything and anything, so I think we're gonna be all right. Anything else, Terry?
Just on the Wind Project, we met with Rez, the large commercial wind developer that's looking at Miami Cast and Fulton Counties, met with Casey Coles with Plan Commission, and also Steve Medsker, County Commissioner, last week, and Brad had a half a dozen things with the zoning ordinance that they would like to see looked at, with some possible changes and amendments to the ordinances. That would be at the council, excuse me, at the Plan Commission's meeting on August 28th at 7:00 PM. The main one being that the wording of the existing ordinance was vague on what was required in terms of public hearing, which they were interpreting, worst-case scenario, if they put up 100 wind turbines in Fulton County, that each one would require a separate public hearing, which would really cause them a lot of angina to do that. So, they were asking for one public hearing for the project, because it's one project. It may be 50 or 80 or 100 turbines, but it's one project, so they're asking for one public hearing. Or a couple of other things about decibel levels, which they actually agreed to increase it from what the council, from what the zoning ordinance currently says. But there was also some indications that, you know, they were, they were looking for a little bit of give on how close the property lines they could be if both property owners had windmills on their property and things like that. So, Casey, you know, we'll, we'll see what the board says on August 28th, but it didn't seem like a lot of anything large, but the wind company needed some clarification on half a dozen items. Large wind project, if it comes out, could mean a significant amount of money to the county, townships, and also to the city, so. So, that's all I got, really.
Anything else with Terry? Thanks, Terry.
Okay, thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Mr. Elling?
Yeah.
This is Paul Elling with Donahue and Associates. I asked Paul to, sorry for the long wait.
It's your show.
Ask Paul to come up from Indianapolis. They're doing the storm sewer project for Main Street, Ninth Street, Monroe. Taken a look at it, and the only way to eat this elephant is a piece at a time. About a $16 million total project, and we're not going at it quite that fashion, we're taking one piece at a time, so. Paul, would you like to explain what Donahue has done in the construction process of gonna be entering in, the Gant chart situation and such?
Okay. Basically, we were retained this past February to work on the project. At this point, we have completed soil borings along the alignments for Main and Monroe Street. The survey has recently been completed also, and I tried to download part of it the other day, it was unsuccessful, so I'm talking to the surveyor, and I expect to get that probably in the office tomorrow then. So, once that's complete, part of the project was to refine the modeling that we did for the master plan work that we did last year. And by refinement, we're looking at what we refer to as 2D modeling, which basically will identify not only what the capacity of the storm sewer needs to be, but also what happens to that excess water when there's a higher intensity storm event. Typically, we're only gonna design for a 10-year rainfall or a 25-year rainfall, and then when you have the 50- or 100-year event, that excess water goes somewhere. And so, we're gonna be modeling in the corridor where that excess water's gonna go, so that we can make sure that it doesn't go into somebody's business. Following the completion of the modeling, which is only gonna take probably six weeks or so, at that point, I'm prepared to start- or so, at that point, I'm prepared to start the design work on the project. The schedule at this point calls for design to be completed next March, and then ready to go to bidding at that point. We've been in discussions with Shada and the mayor about maybe delaying that somewhat until the funding is in place for actual construction. The construction of this initial phase is currently estimated at about $2.5 million, so there's no point in us finishing the design soon if the funding isn't in place for it yet, so that's some of the discussions that you guys have been having regarding the stormwater utility and proceeding with that. So, that's kind of in a nutshell where the project is at right now, and I guess I'm open to any questions, and I understood that there was some concern that we might be duplicating some information that was previously obtained, but I can assure you, I'd be happy to get whatever previous information I can use, I've been pestering the mayor and Shada to dig through the archives to find stuff for me, but at this point, haven't found anything that I can use for design, there's been some preliminary conceptual type of things that were done, but not to the degree of accuracy necessary for me to be able to do a design on it. Obviously, in a sewer project, you know, six inches is important, whether you go up or down, and not knowing what datum, some of the previous work was done on, and there's a number of different datums you can use, that they all tend to vary about four to six inches, so we wanted to use a datum we were confident in, and we've got that information now, and we will be proceeding then as soon as the modeling is completed with the design work.
Yeah, and I asked Paul to come up to date, because this, Paul, asked me last meeting the difference between the 2012 study by Triad and what Donahue's doing, and I was caught a bit off balance. The, the initial study in 2012 was in, in preparation of establishing a rate system for the utilities, the, the storm sewer rate system, and it was, we went through that, and that was pretty much a desk audit.
Right.
A $7,000 venture to establish what, what rates would be to charge everybody throughout the community. We're, we're still working that, it was kind of a, is it safe to say, general?
It was general, it was simplistic, I won't say it was...
Coming up around five bucks.
Yeah, I won't say it was unique, because a lot of communities don't have a lot of good GIS-type data, they'll use an approach like that, because you can easily incorporate it and get it running. It does have some limitations in that, you know, there might be some businesses or some residential parcels that are way off on one end or another, that either are getting a free ride or getting hosed to some degree, so, I mean, the more accurate you can get your data and the more fine-tuning you can do, it's, you have results with a better rate, however, getting that fine-tuning data costs money, so it's kind of a balancing act as to how you want to approach it. At this point, our contract does not include any efforts at all developing the rate study. We've talked about some of that information, but we're not involved in that part of it at all at this point.
And we have some accounting folks that we're working with on that to try and get that, you can't have a fixed number for everybody, you've gotta massage that, you know, schools and hospitals and the bigger areas, they're gonna pay more, you know, in a, in a rate than, than a resident would pay, and we're going through that.
It's based on impermeable services.
Impermeable and impermeable services.
And typically, in most communities, when you end up with this kind of a rate situation where you have commercial and residential, the residences typically pay somewhere between a third, maybe a half, at, at the outside of the total revenues, and commercial and industrial churches and schools, they pay the rest.
Yeah, and, and it, it should also be noted that before you take on a project of this nature, if you're gonna bond it, which you would have to be bonded, and my colleagues at the county heard this the other night on regards to building a new jail, to flow to bond, you have to have created a revenue stream before you can do that, so before the first shovel full of dirt is turned, you have to convince the bond market you have a way to make payments. So, rate system for the utility has to be established, and then that started, we're looking at the first of next year, starting that process, 'cause it will be part of the tax, go on the property tax situation, as it was set up in the, the ordinance, utility ordinance. And that was another question, is our, Storm Sewer Utility Ordinance still in effect? 'Cause it was, oh my gosh, Shada, you got it there in front of you, when was it adopted?
It was adopted, I believe it was November of 2001, was when the Stormwater Utility was actually established. It was amended in 2008, and the amendment was, John would remember this, the amendment was to assign, instead of having a separate Stormwater Utility Board, that the stormwater would fall into the board of works.
The Board of Works, yeah.
Board of Works, same thing, so.
Would you like, apologize, the attorney was not able to be here tonight, he had, was called out of town, but he did research it and sent us a statement.
Per Attorney Perkins, I've looked through both the 2001 ordinance and the 2008 amendment, neither has a sunset provision. I agree that the rates must involve a public hearing, but I don't see any reason to recreate the Stormwater Utility. And his response was, to me was, I had prefaced that by saying, you know, and I firmly believe we, we have to go through the public hearing process to establish the rates, so that was his response back that I was correct in that thing, 'cause we haven't gone down that road. We established the utility, never established a rate. So, we had started conversations, 2013, 14, John? With the Board of Works? Because it was a few years ago.
It's been at least three or four years ago.
Yeah, well, we kind of started that conversation, because essentially what it is, is the Board of Works would need to make the recommendation of, here's what we would like to set as the rate schedule to the council, then the council would approve, would go through the public hearing process, you know, hear from the public, and then move forward with establishing those rates for revenue to come in, and just as the mayor said, all the conversations I've had with the financial advisors, you know, we have to have some kind of revenue stream, and we have to have at least, you know, six to, six months to a year, typically a year, that 12-months' worth of revenue data, and showing that that's coming in before we can even go to the bond market. And the bond market is, is becoming more stringent, so therefore, we have to make sure that we're accomplishing those goals and, and get that taken care of before we go bond on this project. And, you know, we're all very well aware of those problem areas, and I, I think there's been some of those, ah-ha, now I see why you have a problem from the Donahue group, when they've been doing them all and all of that.
Anything else?
No.
To present?
Yeah.
You're gonna open it up to, because I'm the one that initiated this.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Elling, you say, you did or did not have access to the Triad?
The mayor provided me a copy of the report, I reviewed the report, it contains three parts, the first one was a desktop analysis of what the, what a rate study could be, what they did is they sampled, or they selected 50 residential parcels around the community, and tallied up the impervious areas for those, came up with an average, did the same for, I think it was 26 or 27, commercial or industrial properties, and came up with a estimated average for those parcels, and then used those numbers along with the number of parcels of each kind in the city to come up with a, a estimated revenue stream that could be generated at various rates assigned per equivalent residential unit. The report itself is only 11 pages long, there's probably about 10 pages of data that go along with it, and that was the, the first part of the report. The second part was a copy of a stormwater rate ordinance, I'm not aware that was ever adopted, and then the third part of it was a rather extensive listing or, or development code for stormwater that could be incorporated, once again, I'm not aware if that's been adopted or not, but from what I could see from my review of it, it looked like a fairly extensive stormwater code. But as for new development, the codes and requirements that they would have to comply with, it doesn't really have anything to do with the program for the, uh, construction the city would pertain to.
Nowhere in their study did they do surveying, soil samples, none of that?
None of that is mentioned in the report.
You got the, did he have the full report?
Yep, yep. It was, it was basically what they call a desk audit, to, like I said, to establish rates.
There was no documentation of any field work that was done at all?
The Donahue Group, we, we've identified the, the, the problem areas in town and picked out one of the most problem sections to attack first, and this project will continue long after this mayor's gone, there's five different sections that need, need work, and, and like I said, it's about a $16 million total project, and we, we can't handle a $16 million, million-dollar tearing up of the town, so we're gonna take it as a section at a time.
I would've been happy to review previous soil borings or survey and use that data if I could.
Well, we'll get to that in a moment. You said Triad was primarily looking at the financial end?
Right.
Charges and this and that, the other?
Correct, the, the, the rates.
The rates.
To establish the storm sewer rates.
All right, and this accounting firm now is doing what?
We've got an accounting firm that's helping us do massage, massage the material, and we're working with Paul on the...
They're not working on the rates at all?
We, we got the rate information, but we're massaging it a little bit, it turned out, we don't think it's, it's, it's good to have a carb lodge rate across the board. There will be some areas, like I said, industry and, and hospital and school who will have higher rates than the, than the residents, and we want to drill down on that, so we are massaging all that information. We have an accounting firm working with us that has had experience in doing that, so, you know, if you get a $5 rate, it doesn't mean the hospital's gonna have a $5 rate.
My question to you before is, again, Triad's information is used?
No, I wouldn't say...
I paid for a study that we didn't need.
No, 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 we didn't, we paid $7,000.
To Triad?
Yeah.
I don't think so, Mayor, you better look back.
I can confirm that, with $7,200 that we paid.
For what?
For Triad.
Completely?
Yes.
Okay, I'll get back to you, I, I think you're wrong enough. I'll get back to you.
Okay, well...
My question was, it was useless or not?
No, we're, we're, we're using it for the rate study, we're looking at it for the rate study.
And then you're massaging what you...
Yeah, yeah, we're not, we're not gonna take it and throw it out there, because we think there's some attention has to be done to it at this stage of the game, you know, there's a lot, a lot of parking lots out there and things that are paved now that weren't, weren't back at that time, so the rates, we're gonna have to take a good, hard look at them.
You and I have been going back and forth on emails, and three times I've asked you to see these reports, and you haven't responded.
I have responded, I...
You, no, you said you wanted to have a meeting.
Well, sir, if you want the public records, come in and request them, you can get the public records.
I'm sorry, say that again.
I say, if you want to come in and, and ask for copies of the public records, you can.
The contracts.
Yes, you can get the contracts.
That's, that's what I said to you three times. I, I, I'm looking forward to a meeting with you, but I asked you to have access to those, and you, and responded.
No, you, you asked, who, who could sit down and go through?
No, I said, who was my contact to get this information? And I mean, the third time you said it was you.
Yeah, I would be happy to sit down with you.
In the building or whatever, and then you and I will be.
Yeah, I, I read, I read your email very carefully, you were not asking for copies of the reports.
I didn't ask for copies, I asked to review it.
Okay.
Which means I could come in here and review it.
You would come in and you'd sit down with me or one of the other?
Sit down by myself, I don't need you until I'm done reading.
Well, we don't, we don't turn over our records to people.
They're public records.
They're public records, you can, you can have copies of them.
Then, fine, I'll maybe get a copy.
Okay.
My other request was, did you come up from Indy?
Yes.
My other request was, well, you don't recall?
You wanted to, what, have a meeting with both of the contractors, Triad?
No, I wanted both here, so we can talk about apples and oranges.
Well, sir, what's your objective, may I ask? What's your objective here?
My objective is to get answers, Mayor, or you got a problem with that?
No, no.
I, I requested, you, you took it on your own to bring him up, you're right?
Yes.
Yes, and I requested, not knowing that he was, well, yes, I did know that, that you have Triad here, I had no response.
Well, if you come in, you can get the records, you can see everything we've got, we, we're not hiding anything from you.
I didn't say you were, I asked you three times to see these, but I will come to City Hall now.
You come to City Hall and you get the records.
That's all you have to do.
Do we, we don't charge for the copies, right?
If he wants it, yes, we do, if he wants, if he wants to come, he is more than welcome to come to City Hall, and I will provide the documentation, he can sit in the conference room and review it without taking it off-site. As far as copies, it is 10 cents per page for every copy, so that particular study, you know, maybe look in some, some change to actually take copies, but if he just wants to come in and sit down and review it, that's perfectly fine.
So, this would be, that would be my contact, right?
Shada could be your contact, but I'm not comfortable with anybody coming in off the street without, without monitoring of the records, what if the records disappear? Are you going to, going to have copies of them?
Yes, we have, yeah, I mean, it's, it's one of those...
And that's nothing against you, I wouldn't allow anyone to do that, we didn't do that in industry.
Right, when somebody comes in, for, for these studies, we have multiple copies of them, but he is welcome to come in, you know, in the conference room.
Why don't you, why don't you do that then?
What's that?
Come on in and Shada will make the records available to you.
That's fine.
Okay, okay.
It's the long way around.
I thought you wanted to sit down with me!
I do, if that's, but I wanted to look at the reports first.
Okay.
I thought, I explained it in my emails, that we would, we, we'd spoken.
You know what, you know what, Paul, I hate emails, because they...
The context is...
Yeah.
If you would please call City Hall and schedule an appointment, because I'm gonna be in and out, and then we'll set up a time, so I make sure I have all the records that you want that you request, so you can consider what you want.
We are now focused.
But, but, but she can have the invoices for you too, that's, that's public record also.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. And Paul, thank you for...
Okay.
Your presentation.
Do you have any questions, give me a holler.
Okay.
You know where I am.
I do, I do. Okay.
Was it over?
We're gonna go drink a beer. That's hard enough that we need to...
I don't blame you.
I know, I'm a gentleman.
Okay, Chief Butler, are you still away?
Was there a question back there?
Yeah, I got a question in the back.
What's the place you want to be?
Stand up, we can't hear you, pardon.
That's the last on our agenda, we have a second and third reading tonight.
I couldn't even, I couldn't even hear them.
Okay, Chief Butler, you're up.
Yeah, he's later on the table. All right. I'll try to follow the three general rules given to me by my commander, as a military, be quick, be brief, and be gone, but that being said, report.
Bye.
You got the report in front of you. No, for the record, for June, auto fire alarms, four in the city, control, burn, burn piles, one in Richland Township, one in Newcastle Township, dumpster fires, one in the city, mutual aids, one to Liberty, two to Henry, one to Union Township, accidents, one in the city, and that was a hazmat incident, three in Rochester Township, one in Newcastle, one in Richland Township, medical assist, 25 in the city, nine in Rochester Township... Medical assist, 25 in the city, nine in Rochester Township, two in Richland Township. We drove the ambulance four times. Had one rescue in the city that was an infant stuck, or a child stuck in a swing in the park, I believe. We did the triathlon support.
Geez, I didn't hear about that.
It was pretty much released by the time the truck pulled up, so it wasn't, it was really a non-issue, but it went down as a rescue at the park. And then the triathlon support, and then canceled calls, two in the city, one in Union Township. For a total of 58 runs and one drill for the month of June. Pending your questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Chief Chats! What happened to the room?
I'll try to be quicker.
And go.
You got my report, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay.
There you go.
For the month of June, you've got my numbers, you've got the crimes. Pretty standard, our calls for service were 810 for the month, 44 lockouts, 18 people incarcerated. And then you have the crimes those people were alive for.
Yeah, moving up into the big time, Mayor.
Hey, we're getting into white collar, right? And then you also have a copy of what we put together on our latest spillment proposal. I'm not gonna go in over that in depth, but feel free to look over it if you have any questions. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We just basically broke it down. What agency should pay by usage, in my opinion? I, I'm not saying everyone will agree with it, but that's just in my opinion. We broke it down on, based on usage, and each department or agency pays for what they use.
Yeah, we basically are paying for exactly what we're using, and also the maintenance fee is based on exactly what we're using, not a straight third of the whole project. That seems very fair.
And this is in the hands of the council, county council?
Yes, yes.
What is the added module?
We added a couple of items in mobile. I think it was mobile field and interview forms, and mobile arrest forms.
The issue of...
We left out mobile touch.
The issue of the guaranteed 4% increase, we did take exception to that in the letter stating that, not saying we wouldn't pay some kind of increase, but we would expect to have the provider come and explain the added value for that before agreeing to that.
Added value to us, not today?
Exactly, you know, I don't, there aren't many of us who just sign up for guaranteed price increases over 10 years.
Quickly, other news. Our two new officers that we've given conditional offers to, they've been down to Indianapolis to Public Safety Medical. They passed their physical evaluation and psychological evaluation. We're just waiting to get paperwork back from Public Safety Medical. Then we have to sign it, send it down to per for wait for enrollment. I'm hoping to get them on the road, first day training, August 14th. It's a little ambitious right now, I think, because I think they're kind of, Public Safety Medical's dragging their feet on getting us the paperwork. I don't know if they were, are running behind, but I've got the results, but I can't do anything until I get the hard copy from them. And then police in the park this Saturday. If you guys aren't doing anything, we'd be happy to see you out there. I hope we have a huge crowd. I hope we run out of food. I hope we run out of snacks. I, I hope it's our best event yet. I've confirmed we are gonna have a dunk tank, two face painters, and a balloon artist. We'll have a dog demonstration, a canine demonstration, eight o'clock. Everything starts at seven. We'll have a dog demonstration at eight o'clock, and then the movie starts at nine.
And what time are you in the dunk tank, Chief?
I delegated that one. Seven o'clock, starts at seven o'clock. So, and the animals, animal adoption center will be there also with an adoption event.
Yeah, I, I, again, I, Paul Barrett with Chief Chats saying, encourage you to come out if you've got a chance. It was, it was really well attended last year, and it's kind of nice to see that kind of participation in our park. Chief does a great job with it. It's a lot of work.
It is, yeah, I appreciate that. I just, I, I hope to continue to grow it every year, so, you know, next year, if you have any suggestions or ideas, by all means, throw them my way and we'll get it figured out.
You say what movie it is?
Uh, yeah, this year it's A Secret Life of Pets, so...
For our worldwide audience?
That's right, yes, all across the world. Come to Rochester, watch a movie about pets and then take one home.
It was really encouraging last year to see five police officers playing pickup basketball with five kids.
They regretted that afterwards. They were sweaty in uniform. It doesn't work out very well in uniform. It was a good time, though. So, yeah, unless you have any questions, that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Andy.
Okay, Randy?
Start the clock watch on.
There we go, Randy.
Good evening. We did normal lab testing, we did plant, we mowed it. We had number, second stage number two clarifier, we got it put back together. It's back online and running. The collections, we did locates, mowed lift stations, we jetted storm drains on Boulevard Street, and we had a sewer call on in the alley between Jackson Boulevard and Lake Shore Drive, and we jetted it and restored the flow. Stormwater, Paul from Donahue explained that. Seventh Street, we've started the project July 10th. We lost two days last week because of rain. They finished the bore pit this week, and tomorrow they're supposed to start boring under the railroad, insert the steel casing. Fourth Street, the community crossing grant application was submitted July 12th. And this part of the Fourth Street projects, from the railroad to State Road 25, at a total cost of 1 point, or $1,327,099. And because the city population's under 10,000, NDOT will pay for 75%, which is $995,324, and the city will pay 25%, which is the $331,775.
Which we're capturing from?
That is from our special lowe distribution that we got last year from the state that is sitting in a fund. The only thing we can use it for is improvement projects such as this, yes. And we'll have a little leftover in that fund, because we actually have about $375,000 and $125,000 of the, we captured, $505,000 total. I was required to put 75% of that into a special distribution fund, which I did, which is, was the one that I mentioned to you guys. The, or actually, we had to have approval. You guys created that fund for me. And then the other remaining 25% went rainy day fund.
The only other thing, the bids for the phosphorus removal and super nate at the plant was open July 20th, and Commonwealth took them to review.
Right, okay. Any questions for Randy? Got a lot going on, a lot going on.
Yeah.
Got a question, the Seventh Street project, is that tied into the wastewater or the sewer project that he was talking with?
Uh, no. This is, we're putting a new sewer line under the railroad because of the old one is, was a cast iron pipe, and it was scaled so bad that we couldn't get a camera truck through it. And it pretty much services the east side of Rochester around the lake.
Yeah, it's a huge artery, so...
It's a sewer, not stormwater?
Right, that's sewer.
Yeah, that's gonna be an interesting operation. They have to do some pumping and changing of direction of the thing while they put the new one in. So it's gonna be quite interesting. But they know what they're doing, don't they?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Lenny?
This better be good. This better be good, it won't be hard for you. I'll save some no-dos back here. Out at the street department, we ran the recycling route, as we always do. Ran the downtown trash receptacles, watered the flowers downtown Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, pending the rain, and that's been pretty frequent here lately. Weed eaten, pulled weeds at City Hall and the Community Resource Center and sprayed and trimmed the bushes. We've been cleaning off the storm drains and trying to keep them clean. Repaired a few street signs on Mitchell and Ewing and Idaho Wild and West Side Drive. Trimmed back around a couple of stop signs. Cleaned a, started cleaning the vacant lot, lot over there at Sixth and Monroe. Chip brushed and picked up some small piles of brush. Picked up some bags of yard debris, hauled two loads of mulch for the butterfly garden. Mowed the shooting range, patched holes in various locations, and then swept the streets.
Said mulch project all finished now at the park?
Yeah, we are, we are done with the, we replenished the mulch in Manitowoc Mountain. We still have quite a bit left, but Fensler Park's gonna take a large majority of it. And I figured if we have any left, we can just kind of fill it in, and as they trump it down, we can add to Manitowoc Mountain as they usually do once it's fluffed up. And then, in other park news, we, I got the signage for the disc golf course. It's just getting a matter of time for Denny to sit down and paint it up, and it won't take long to put the signs up. And I see they've been frequently using that quite a bit out there. It's surprising. And I've heard a lot of good things about it, but...
Good, good.
Other than that, I suppose I'll have.
Is there any way we can get that mulch out of there before the...
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, we're gonna do that tomorrow. We're gonna work on the Fensler Park tomorrow. I was gonna get with Derek's people this morning and have them do it, but one of them that showed up, show up, he was sick, so I didn't want to just put it all on the one guy, so, well, I told him, made arrangements to do it in the morning then.
Okay.
And I'd like to thank, thank Derek for letting him, letting us use them for a couple of days. They really was a good asset, and they did, they do a marvelous job.
Derek owned his summer helpers stuff, Lenny, for, had a mountain of mulch to deal with.
I had six of my guys out there, the street department, and Wade and Denny were also out there. We had Manitowoc Mountain filled by then with mulch, so... They, they all busted their butts. I can, I take my hat off to them. They did a good job.
Thank you. Anybody have questions for Lenny? Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Area Planning Commission, Karen?
I was unable to attend the meeting before last. And we didn't, we're not having one tomorrow night, so it'll be a while.
Okay.
That's gonna be hard to beat.
Park Board, Mason?
Yeah, well, Lenny did his part. Chief Chats talked about moving out in the park, so I can skip over all that. Pool numbers, from June 12th to July 8th, the pools revenue, just from that time period, were $9,333, and that comes from 3,796 swimmers.
That's amazing. It is something, wow.
You know, that's an almost month period. In the first two weeks, the first two and a half weeks, I think, it is included, that was another 30-some-hundred swimmers, and revenues of $16,000 at that point. But a lot of season passes were bought in the first couple of weeks. They replaced a diving board that was broken, and...
And we had a meeting out there.
Yep, the meeting was, actually, at the pool. Luckily, they had that nice office because it was pouring rain the whole time, so we got to stay dry. That's it from the pool. From the golf course, our year-to-date numbers are $166,713. That's the highest since 2013, just slightly under 2013, and $15,000 short of 2012, but a steady, steady increase the past few years. And, let's see, what's the date today, 25th? There's a Camp Weekend outing Friday, and Nick Patterson Memorial, August 12th. So Camp Weekend is Friday the 28th, and Nick Patterson on Saturday, August 12th. And that is it for the golf course. So that is it for my report. Any questions?
Questions for Mason?
I did, I did forget something. There, the Manitowoc Mountain's all been power washed, and we probably just put some seaweed on it next week.
Okay.
Start on that, too, so...
Great, great. Thanks, Lenny. Okay, BZA and Council on Aging, Marty?
BZA meets tomorrow. Rather small agenda for them. A home addition, a fence, and a guy that wants, he has a lot, wants to split it into two, and one of them would be a little bit small, but nothing of great consequence there, but that's tomorrow night. Council on Aging met yesterday. From the Transpo people, we've discussed a little bit about the rates that the drivers are paid versus the rate for the dispatch, but nothing was done with those. The bottom line for the rides, we are up eight and a half to nine trips a day. So the report for June of 2017 was 3,626 trips, which was up about 110 from the prior time. Yeah.
That sounds like my trips to Inyard's when I'm working on the project. That's a lot of trips.
We did ask for a little information, and basically, the expense for Transpo is, is about 70 cents a mile for every, every mile that they drive. So the rate increase on the rides, May, June, and July, has generated about $659 of increased revenue. And they are using about 1,313 driver hours per month.
Wow.
So that's the report from Transpo. RSVP, the Cape Cod trip is completely full, so there's no room for anybody else. That's a really good thing for RSVP. We don't make a lot of money on those things, but they, they are pretty well received. There is a trip to San Antonio in May of 2018 that is already sold out. I'm sorry, halfway sold out. And so if anybody's interested in that, $899 gets you transportation to San Antonio. It does bring you back, John, even, yeah. 10 nights, nine, 10 days, nine nights, so they are still taking reservations for that. They also had volunteers that worked at the fair and are working at the recycling center this month. As far as Council on Aging, the golf tourney, a result of $6,800 of revenue for the council, which it was up from last year, which is really nice. There is a cookout that is at 11:30 on August 24th. And Council Director Georgia Mattia wanted to make sure that council and city employees knew they were invited to that, so...
It's at the center?
Yes, it is. Hot dogs and chips and things like that.
When was that again?
That is August 24th at 11:30. And there is a garage cleanup that is being organized now, and I understand that Georgia maybe has talked to Lenny, gonna loan us a power washer for a day or two or something like that, so... Pending questions, that's my report.
Any questions for Marty? Thank you, Marty. Tree Board and EMS, Brian?
Tree Board got earlier in the month. Still going to do the ongoing trimming and removal of trees as the city residents call in or... in or they, if they're seen, you know, some trees are seen or whatever, they need to be done, comes tree board detention. Yeah, still working on all that. Uh, something came in today through Lenny. Uh, obviously, the people haven't met on yet officially.
They don't have to.
Well, so, but there's, you know, still working with Lenny. Yes, emergency matter come on.
Emergency situation.
Right.
I saw that come in. How emergency are we there?
There's, uh, Thomas and Brad were out this morning, and, uh, they called me over to 1170 Madison address. And, uh, there was like four or five trees, uh, limbs broke, this, and the forks of the trees up, uh, on this, uh, tree that we looked at. And, uh, there was one already broke off, about 30 foot long, hanging over the ground. So, uh, and there, the trees all decayed and rotted and.
So it's in really, really tough shape. Let's, let's just go ahead.
Yeah, it's going down in the morning.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Well, and the other thing is, it is one that's already on their list.
Okay.
We did, Ray did confirm that. That, that particular tree, I believe, is on their list for the next round. But given the circumstances for it.
But it's not, it wasn't one that had already gone out for list to be?
No, it's on the next one.
Okay.
Okay. EMS, did you say?
EMS, well, actually, the, EMS did meet.
Okay.
Thursday, I think it was, Thursday, Friday, I think it was. And, uh, but everything seems to be going well with the, you know, the switch over is going well and the, you know, the staffing is doing good. Uh, they still have some issues with the, sometimes with the various volunteer agencies and everybody else. They have to get memorands or understanding to everybody. Dispatch issues, not related to the spillment matter, but dispatching, as who goes where. Uh, the biggest safety thing they brought up was one person calls, one helicopter, another agency calls, another helicopter. Two helicopters don't always know that they're here together. And it's a safety issue for them. So that's the one, the bigger thing they're trying to address that now with the surrounding counties. Does that more or less sum it up, Tom? Was it more or less sum it up, but the two helicopters being called?
Basically, what we're gonna do is, uh, EMS has gotten with, with other counties, like, we'll take 110, for instance. There's a, there's a, there's a magic line there. If, if the victim is, uh, on the north side, it's Marshall County. If it's on the south side, it's ours. What I normally do is I'll, I'll walk around on top of the mags, I'll, I'll request, or for, I'll radio their request that, that an air ambulance be, be brought in place. If Argus arrives quickly, just with the mechanism of the injury and, and normally the speeds are involved there, they might call their dispatch, um, for a helicopter. And then that's how we get two inbound aircrafts. So what we're gonna do is just try to double check with, with both chiefs or both ICs to see what, what's been requested, so we're not doing any requests. It, it was just, uh, both agencies doing the right thing. Sometimes the, the log enforcement will arrive there first and, and, and there's enough veteran officers, um, that, that can just tell by the mechanism of injuries that they're gonna need, uh, aircrafts. So they might make requests. So it's just gonna, everyone's gonna have to just communicate a little bit better.
Work, work together on it.
Yeah.
Work together on it, yeah.
Yeah, just, just communication. Everyone's working together, it's just not everyone's passing the information, uh, as the scene develops of what, what assets are being requested and.
Uh, there isn't a situation of Lutheran versus Parkview?
No, 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 no.
Okay, okay. Just wanna make sure of that, yeah.
I'm good.
Yep.
It's, it's, no, no, because when I talk to EMS, they don't, if, if, if I'm talking to a Lutheran paramedic in the back of their ambulance working, or we're still in the process of an extrication going on, they don't really care what helicopter. They want that victim on an aircraft going to a, a, a trauma center.
That's the way it should be, absolutely, absolutely.
So I, I will, I will defend the medics that we have working here. It, it isn't a, you need to call the purple helicopter. They don't, they don't care. They, the request is for a helicopter.
Okay.
It's just the two different agencies. And when, when Marshall County does their request, they're gonna call Lutheran 3, which is up, they gotta do helicopter based up in that area. If I call Fulton County, they're naturally gonna go to SAM first because they're right here in our backyard.
Okay.
So, so there, there is no conflict and, and stickers on the side of the aircraft. It's just maybe not good communication deciding who, who's the IC of the scene is probably the one that's used there.
And they're working through that.
Yeah, but they're working through that. And they also wanna make sure that they don't need two helicopters going to one place because that means that someone else will not be able.
They need that helicopter.
Right. So they just wanna make sure that just one is called and then everything else is available to whoever else is needed.
Yeah, okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Anything?
There is one thing with, with Lutheran, uh, they are gonna be offering an EMT course. Uh, we are gonna host that at the fire station. It's gonna be at no cost for the course for the fire departments in the county. We're gonna break it down, uh, probably gonna be 20, 20 students available, um, because they have one instructor. So that's what the state allows for instructor per student ratio.
And, and when is that, Tom?
I'm sorry?
When is that going to be?
It's gonna start this fall. We don't have, anything wrapped up? Uh, I'm gonna use the fun out of my budget line for transportation education. Lutheran said they'll provide the instructor. We need to provide the, the books. They're about $250 bucks, uh, for the curriculum for, for each student. And the most we'll have are, are five students from our department, depending on what the other departments, uh, wanna get in.
Okay.
And what they can afford. I, I think that's a good, fair, fair price. They're paying all, all the instructor hours. It'll start this fall, it'll be two nights a week, and it'll run well up to the spring, maybe early summer. So Lutheran does have an investment in, in this as well. So them asking for us to pay for our textbooks is, is really a.
A good deal.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Uh, anything else, Brian? No? Water board, John?
I'm telling you, I get to say something tonight.
Call the banker.
I think Tom did that. Okay, water board, that on July the 3rd. Of course, uh, they approved the minutes of the June 5th meeting. Blank, uh, list was approved. Update by Derek at the board that everything was operating as normal. The write-off list for the 215 counts receivable was presented to board. And of course, that motion was approved, that they accepted those also. Keith had some questions concerning the reserves, interest income, and investment strategies. Uh, the board tabled it until our, uh, next, their next meeting, I mean, on August, in the August meeting. And it was just that Keith has really come up with some really good ideas pertaining to the money that's kind of being stagnant, that could be invested and make some, you know, make a little bit of interest money somewhere. And I think it's, personally, I think it's a really good idea. Uh, whether we can do it or not, we'll find out after next meeting. Shaw is gonna be involved with telling us what is allowed to be done and can't be done. Uh, Derek was telling us that the big salt tank project was completed. Uh, the four painting project, it seems like that's been going on a long time, but it was fin, it's finally completed. Update was presented to Derek at the board on the Fourth Street tower situation. Cost was estimated at around $5,800 for the, and I was gonna say a glitch, but it was a failure of a, one of, and of course, that's one of the new towers, but it was a failure for a new electronical part that just really made the, oh, there's the tank got too low and then it really just hurt itself trying to establish. All the tanks run on the same level. You just don't fill this tank and this tank, and then this tank. Uh, they, they're all maintained at about, at the same level constantly. And something happened, and I don't know if we're gonna get compensated for that or not. Uh, but to see if it's still on our warning, probably not. Update was presented, uh, to Derek at the Walmart, that dedicated the water line over to the, uh, water department. Of course, that's gonna be for the new businesses that are gonna be out in that area. Update was presented to Marvin at the board, contacted with employee of Duke Energy about getting the grounds fixed at the water plant, which, uh, we've been, Derek's been staying on that because as they did put those towers in back there, really tore that ground up. And there's no reason why the city is too, they should've been fixed before now, but there's no reason the city should have to get involved in any expenditures on that ground that Duke tore up. Uh, update was presented to Derek on the employees taking vacations for the month. It was Randy Carr and Randy Wynn. Derek wasn't going on vacation that month. An update was presented by Derek at board on the Rochester Water Department monthly duties for the month of June. And with that, they adjourned the meeting. Any further questions?
How did, how'd the double billing process all work out?
You know, it's been, it's been, I really just, now, I'm, I'm saying maybe, you know, maybe even the next month we might be here anymore. But right now, uh, there hasn't been any significant major.
I see two no one home.
Yeah, two no one home. I was gonna say, I mean, from, there's not been a.
It's been smooth.
We, yeah, I mean, there's been certainly some folks that didn't read the information we sent out. I don't, you know, you mean, I was supposed to read the paper that you put in that bill that you sent? Yes, you were supposed to read the message that we sent.
Six times that we said, yeah.
So we've had those, but for the most part.
It's smooth.
Well, your communication was, was great. So if people read it, they.
Yeah, they got it. And even some that did, they still didn't quite it. So we've had some folks come in and we actually would visually show them, you know, print out their bill and really, and we've spent the time, you know, the girls have done that. And I gotta give kudos to all my girls because they have went above and beyond to try to make sure. And, and, and you're gonna have the, the, that just, they're not happy no matter what. They don't understand.
Sure.
They think they're getting an extra bill and they're not. It is, it, they're not getting, they're not gonna pay any more bills this year than they did last year. And so goodbye in part, once they see it. John's right, it's been.
It went a lot smoother than I ever personally.
Good. Me, too, yeah. But, but again, it was all the communication.
Yeah, it was very good.
Yes.
Communication was excellent.
Well done.
We did, that was the other thing I focused on, was trying to make sure we communicated it so that.
Good, good job to you and your personnel and to the water board. Nice job, by all.
Well done.
Thank you. I will accept that. We were a little terrified moving into July.
Yeah, I understand.
Any other questions for John? Okay, before we move on into the ordinances, a couple economic development things to throw out. Of course, the pilot, uh, truck stop, as you know, has, they've pretty much become a member of the community now. They had closed on their property on July the 10th. And about July the 11th, you saw bulldozers dropped off out there. So they were, they're working hard to that end out there. One of the subjects on the table at Endot last week, that Terry and I went to talk to the folks, you know, it's one of those things, you get the right people and you get them three at a table rather than 100 in a room, you, you tend to get some more information that way. And we, we had a really good meeting. And if you remember, Casey was here asking for a letter of support for turn lanes down there on 25, so the 18-wheelers would be. But well, we just took that sketch and presented it to the Endot director. He looked at it and said, well, we can do that, that's no problem. Cut through all the letters. So we, he got it on their agenda. He's now working with Casey. That's gonna happen. So those are, those are all good things.
Are those utility? There were some people working down there this morning along the, the road?
Yeah.
Is that utility work that's?
They're probably doing some locates.
They've been doing some mooring. Uh, they're needing, you were correct. It was, and they only know that because the question came to my office about the maps for the locate.
Is that the NIPSCO folks that are?
Uh, the last I knew it was sanitary sewer. Uh, they were looking at doing some mooring under there for the sanitary sewer and potentially water. Uh, and I'm not sure that Derek got all the information he needed yesterday to relay back to them. And I'm not sure that Randy, I think Randy, you got all the information to them that they needed. But I think it is utilities. I'm not sure about NIPSCO.
Okay, yeah, that.
I know definitely municipal utilities.
Of course, those folks that are at Hart, the old Hartshafter and Marks, that's the contracting crew that, uh, is working on the, the NIPSCO line coming into town. They're redoing that out north or south of town, bringing that in. So that crew will be here for, oh, several weeks yet. Yeah. Uh, then the other thing, uh, Terry mentioned that we are heading to Illinois in the morning. We have, now we've parlayed with the 900 letters going over there and everything. We have three real serious folks and, and a big one to talk to tomorrow. So we're, we're heading to Peoria tomorrow for a, for a meeting. So we'll, we'll keep you apprised of what's going on there, but some good things are happening in that. And then, one of the questions for Endot was if we brought somebody up to 31, will they get shut off if they're out there? And, uh, we were happily informed that, uh, for 20 years, it looks like things will be pretty accessible there. So that was information we had to have. Okay, uh, moving right along then. Uh, no ADA concerns, uh, no legal issues right now. Takes us down to the ordinances and resolutions. We have a, uh, an unfinished ordinance, uh, number 03-2017.